Okay, I take it that everybody is ready to begin? And I can't see who's on our Zoom, but Carolyn and Sam and Jake just wanted to check in.
Yes, everything is ready on my end, Supervisor.
Supervisor, if you are able to look at the participants, you'll see that we have, right now, we have 14 attendees in addition to the panelists.
Good. So go, let's go ahead and begin and call this meeting to order. Today is our special governance workshop on April 16th. It is 9:01 a.m. And let's go ahead and have a moment of silence. I just want to, because of my experience this morning, dropping my kids off to school, I just want to be thankful for everything that our education system has done to provide a safe place for our children and continuance of education during all this time during COVID-19. And so if we can just hold all of our educators from the top all the way to the bottom in our thoughts and just have a moment of silence.
Can I add to that?
Please, if you want to add to that.
There's been 45 shootings nationally in the last 30 days.
Do you want to say that in a microphone? I don't know if anybody...
Right. There's been 45 shootings across our country in the last 30 days, and we can have a moment of silence for those victims and families.
Supervisor Simon, would you like to lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, we need just a moment for our facilitator, Michelle Scully, to be brought in as a participant. And so I've asked staff to do that, and she, we'll see her here in just a second.
Okay. And I'm not sure if our facilitator was going to decide on the order of how we set our proposals for everyone to see, just to kind of look at, if there is nothing already set up by the facilitator, I was thinking of just going by district order.
She's here.
And that includes myself. That way I don't, I just fit in wherever I'm supposed to fit in, which would mean that we start with Supervisor Simon, if Supervisor Simon is fine with starting that way.
Can we check in with our facilitator who just landed and see if she had other thoughts?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Michelle. Hi, good morning.
You can hear me? Hey, good morning, everyone. I think district is a really great way. That's what I was thinking, Chairperson Sabatier.
Okay. And so again, just to kind of set it up, we have Michelle Scully here, who will be our facilitator for the governance workshop. We were given homework assignments to bring goals for supervisory goals to have for this year, kind of explained that last, not this last Tuesday, but the Tuesday before last, to explain what this governance workshop would be all about. And so, Michelle Scully, thank you for being here to facilitate the meeting. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, you also had public input on your agenda before we give her the floor.
Oh, let's go ahead and open up public input. If there's any input from the public not regarding any items on the agenda, please go ahead and click the button on the bottom of your screen to raise your hand, or if you're calling via phone, go ahead and dial star nine. And there will be public comment once we get to the part of, for public comment in our later agenda item. So let's go ahead and close public comment for now, and Michelle Scully, item 5.1 is yours to begin with.
Well, good, good morning, Board. Good morning, Chairperson Sabatier, and Carol, and Carolyn, and Sam. I can't see anybody else, but I appreciate the opportunity to be with you today. I want to help where I can, maybe just corral some thoughts, but I appreciate that your Board has taken it upon themselves to look at Vision 2028, which is a very broad aspirational goal, and break that down into execution and nuts and bolts and what that looks like. So I'm happy to be here this morning and help as I can, and if there's anything in particular you'd like from me, just let me know.
And nothing in particular at all at this moment in time.
So, so your Board had homework, and it was to prepare in advance a presentation with at least two of your proposed goals and related justifications for those, and as well the challenges, because we know that Lake County is no stranger to challenges. And each of your proposed goals have to be realistic and measurable and must center around components of Vision 2028, better quality of life for Lake County residents, cleaner, safer Lake County, and staff development leading to more effective use of public funds by being more efficient and responsive. And just reading those, you can tell that's a pretty hefty goal, so I'm looking forward to your presentation today and also the interaction later on with the department heads. So if there's nothing else, I would kick this off to Supervisor Simon.
Thank you very much. You know, when we were asked to do this, just wanted to make sure I could get out the priorities that I felt were, you know, incremental for this year. So I did put together a small presentation. We'll see, you know, how that goes, but I just wanted to be very clear, I did send it to Jake. I'm just going to kind of read through it. I kind of did a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm just going to read through it, if that's all right right now.
Please.
So 2021 goals, roadmap to 2028, presented by District Supervisor Moke Simon. This presentation lists my priorities for the upcoming year, 2021. Number one, investing in our workforce. Number two, economic development. These are the priorities that I believe will help us achieve the goals we have laid out in our Vision 2028 for Lake County. Can you scroll to the next one, Jake? Thank you. As we work for this, number one, priority workforce investment. Investing in our workforce is my number one priority for 2021. It will be our best return on any investment we can make as a board. Two, the workforce is the implementation arm of our Vision 2028 for Lake County. That is why I think it is so critical. Number three, we have taken a small step forward with the implementation of our recent class and comp study, but there is more work to be done by the Board by the end of 2021. Go to the next one, Jake. Number two, economic development. Investment in the workforce will in turn be supportive to the developers and contractors and constituents when dealing with the county departments. Two, a positive attitude towards development, both by the Board and each department, how to get the yes for economic development. Looking for long-term infrastructure projects that will lead to long-term investment and returns for the county. Next one, challenge, challenges and obstacles. Dealing with ongoing global pandemic and natural disasters have brought extreme challenges. Also look for changing the old culture of we can't to we can, and seeking funding sources, funding for the work investment, for the workforce investment for the long term. And with that, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present my priorities today and look forward to the conversations to follow. I hope that gets the gist. I imagine there's going to be some more in depth from other folks, but you know, those are the priorities that I feel bring to the table are the most attainable and opportunity for us to move forward. We're working on a lot of those on the Economic Development Task Force, but also, you know, like I've done since day one when I was elected, can't do this as a Board. We can have all the ideas we want, but investing in the workforce is how it's going to get done. We are, like I said, we kind of have the idea and the imagination of where we want to go and the long-term vision, but each and every one of us understand how critical it is to have the workforce there to implement everything that we want to see completed. And so those are my two priorities for this year. Obviously, there's a lot more, but just want the opportunity to say thank you very much for the presentation I was able to give today. And that's probably what I have this morning.
Awesome.
Thank you, Supervisor Simon. We'll have plenty of time for discussion later, so let's just keep going with presentations. And that would bring us to you, Chairperson Sabatier for District 2.
All right. Jake, if you can please pop up my presentation, which doesn't look quite as nice as Supervisor Simon's. Mine is just more texty. Make me wish I had cleaned it up a little bit better. So Lake County Supervisor Goals, if we can go ahead and go to the next one and get started. So I think that there's really two foundational issues, and they're very interconnected in our communities. One is health. We know that we have subpar health metrics and we have limited access to healthcare. A lot of people have to go out of the county in order to get the type of healthcare that they're looking for. And then the other issue is wealth. We have high poverty rates, low household income, and low housing prices. And in reality, as soon as you increase the wealth of our population, you will see the health of our population increase as well. And so I think we really need to focus on trying to make that change possible. And I think that changing what is happening in our population will have an absolute positive impact as to the changes that we need to make here in our county. We can try again and again and again to make changes here, and I'm not saying do not invest. I love what Supervisor Simon brought up, but if we invest only into our workforce and we don't invest in the people that put us here in the first place, then we're going to be helping them and helping them and helping them, but they're not going to be able to help themselves. And we need to get to a point where they can help themselves. And I think that if you look at, I was looking at the different budgets for all the counties that surround us, only the counties that border Lake County, we actually spend more on per capita basis, based on our full budget, per capita than we do in Sonoma County or in Napa County. But the fact is, what we spend our money on are assistance services more so than economic development or other things like that. And so I think that if we help them get past the part where they need to utilize so much of our funding to help them, that we can then put a lot more of our funding into the critical infrastructure that we need and things like that. And I think that we need to look at changing the face of our county. And so if we can go to the next slide, please. And also just real quick, just to point out, Sonoma County and Napa County being definitely a very different population compared to ours and other surrounding counties, they're below 8% poverty, we're at about 18%. And so the drastic difference of where we have to dedicate money is where I think we would like to see that change. And I see two things that are foundational in making those changes, education and environment. Education is the number one factor in increasing your wealth and your chances of being successful in, in life. And I'm not saying you have to get a bachelor's degree. I'm not saying you have to get a PhD. I'm saying if you want to be a police officer, you have to get educated to go and go to police academy in order to have that job. If you want to work for PG&E and be a linesman, you have to be educated to do those things. If we can get people to a higher level of education, then we can get people to get, open the doors to access jobs that we currently are offering and can't fill. And we're looking for people outside of our county rather than being able to offer those to people in our county. We have to find ways to make that possible. And our environment, our environment unfortunately has been hit hard ever since the 50s or 60s. It's been stuck in time. It's like, it's like a time capsule where we haven't necessarily upgraded, and we need to upgrade the environment. Our housing stock is old, our roads are old, there's just so many things that we have not been able to maintain. If we change the environment around us, it will change the way that we and our people look at the environment around them and how they will treat that environment. If it's crumbling, people aren't going to care as much to want to fix things and keep things maintained and looking very vibrant. But if we change things and make it look nice and make it vibrant, then people are going to not want to make it go back to that, and people are going to change. I'm sure we've all seen it, it's the domino effect in our neighborhoods. When you start fixing your house, your neighbor looks at what you're doing and they start wanting to do the same thing. You're building a nice fence, you're tending a nice lawn, you're doing nice landscaping. It, they see those things and they see that it's possible to get done. All of a sudden, the domino effect happens in the neighborhood and everyone else starts to pitch in and starts doing their thing. We can be the catalyst for some of that change. So let's go ahead and talk about some of those specific goals that I'm bringing. Let's go to the next page. So number one, and these are very lofty goals, start lofty and then eventually narrow it down if these are goals that are chosen as to how it is that we can get it. Community revitalization grant. I want to see a million dollars infused in a chosen community, which that will be one of our challenges, is which one is the chosen community. And the criteria must be that it has a town hall who collaborates in providing support in community growth boundaries. And actually, I apologize, I took community growth boundary. I didn't take that out. I should have taken that out because I know that Cobb is not a community growth boundary, and I don't want to eliminate the potential of that. So I apologize that that's still there. But let me start over. Must have a town hall who collaborates in providing their, providing support in their community by being the intermediary between local government services and residents of the area for greater success in this grant program. Let's go ahead and move on. So primary objectives would be to re-stripe and fix road signage, add additional lights for enhanced safety, provide grant funding to businesses and homes to clean up and repair, such as a fresh coat of paint, fixing the fence. And of course, we can't go too far because certain repairs are very expensive, and we're not here to tell you what your home needs, but I know that we do have municipal code of what is expected of our businesses and homes to look like, and we can utilize that code. Dedicate funding for law enforcement and/or code enforcement to be in that specific, to prioritize that specific community and request increased patrolling in the area. Let's go ahead and move on. Here's what a potential budget could look like. Again, a million dollars infused in a single community, $300,000 in grants for curbside cleanup and upgrades to businesses, $250,000 in grants for housing upgrades, small repairs such as fencing and paint, $10,000 in additional lighting for a minimum of five years payment, not $5, but five years payment. That way, we advance the ability to pay for those lights, and eventually they get absorbed into the lighting district. $50,000 for striping and road signage, $140,000 in community cleanup, including vehicle towing, garbage cleanup, and more, and up to $200,000 in community public safety prioritizing that community, i.e. dedicated law enforcement and code enforcement. I think that to make a change is one thing, but we need to also ensure that that change is going to remain. If all we're doing is changing something and moving on and that degrades back to where it was, we haven't solved the problem. And we need to make sure that money spent is not just money spent that feels good, but money spent that actually makes significant long-term change. And I think that if we're going to make change in a specific area, let's look to ensure that it stays that way by ensuring that there is the staffing to make it that way, to keep it that way. Let's go ahead and move on. So this hits a couple of goals from Vision 2028, focused economic development, while it's not creating businesses or it's not increasing revenue in the typical direct way. This is a very indirect way where it can increase the values of properties, it can increase the interest of investors in the community. There's very much an economic development factor to this, but it's mainly just, again, community revitalization. Clean up our neighborhoods through code enforcement, funding to strengthen communities and enhance public safety. All those things are goals within Vision 2028. And I see this as being a pilot program where, again, only 200,000 of that would be continuous money to help continue the salaries of those hired for those areas while we move on to another community and infuse some money and provide a stimulus. To me, what I'm looking at is we need to do something that has a return on our investment, and I believe that this has the potential for a very large return on investment. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. Measurables, that to me is pretty simple. We set a baseline with the data from our Sheriff Department, code enforcement, animal control, look at our census as far as the values of properties, things like that, and see if we have improvements being impacted by the work that we do. And if the data changes, then it proves that we are doing something correct and we are moving the dial. Challenges, as usual, we'll be hiring staff, creating agreements on how grants will be handled and followed. I have ideas of local agencies and nonprofits that we can work with so that it's not a workload added on to our staff. And then, of course, when I think one of the toughest decisions, we'll be choosing a community to start with. But again, this is meant to be a pilot program where we can move forward into another community the following year. Now, I know that there are ways, many ways to revitalize a community, but I feel that we are, we've been waiting for a long time for, for it to happen organically. And I think that we need to recognize that waiting for something organically to happen, we could be waiting for a very long time. I think we need to take a very proactive approach, a very methodical approach, and if we could change the face of a community, then that community will have that facelift, will have that culture change, will have that, that, that lasting effect that we're looking for. We can make that impact if we choose so. Let's go ahead and move on. I believe we're going on to goal number two. So this one is a poverty intervention goal. Education is what I'm highlighting here. It is absolutely in research all over the place that children who have access to preschool are more likely to be successful in their careers, less likely to be arrested, more likely to have access to good health insurance and healthcare, therefore living a more prosperous and healthy life. And we are not at the level that we would like to be here. There's still 100 available positions for people that could put their children in schools but aren't able to access it because of the cost. It is about $6,000 per child per year, and that is approximately $600,000. I am looking to change, again, our population to be more successful rather than waiting for someone else to fix the things that absolutely 100% impact us in the future. If economic development is not based on the level of education in our community, I don't know what it is. We will never move forward in a great way until we provide some of these things. So that's $600,000 on that. Benefits of preschool has been well researched and leads to high occupational prestige, lower felony arrests, less depressive symptoms in adulthood, which has many, many impacts. Let's go ahead and go to the next part. The second part is on the opposite side of preschool is community college. Right now, California passed AB 19, which is the California Promise Grant, meaning if you go to full-time school after you graduate high school, your first year will be paid for entirely if you don't qualify for financial aid. Approximately 70% of all our students qualify for financial aid, which means the majority of them already will be taken care of. There's approximately 550 graduates per year. I believe when I did the math, that's about 150 that may not qualify for financial aid. And again, not all 150 would remain here. They might move on to move somewhere else, maybe go on to a university or four-year college because they were accepted. Typically, it's about 10% of our graduates that do that, but that's the maximum number we would be looking at. I think that it's important to push for college, and let me define college. It is if you want to be, for instance, at the college I'm very used to, because I used to work there, Woodland Community College, you can go into welding courses, you can go into water and wastewater management courses, which we have a lot of people right here, even in our own staff, that will be retiring soon because that is definitely getting to be an older workforce, and we need to generate new workforce to be able to replace them in the long run once retirement hit. There's many different options and opportunities at the community college level. It's not about getting a bachelor's, it's not about getting an A degree, it's about providing the assistance to our community to be able to access the jobs that we are, again, having trouble to fill every single year. And having those positions filled can provide better services and better outcomes overall. And it's approximately $1,500 per year to be able to afford a tuition over at a community college. And so again, about 150, times 1,500, we're looking at about $300,000 per year. This has, is a program that was just approved in the city of Woodland, where I believe they are giving 100,000, it might be 200,000, I think it's $100,000 for this exact type of program, and I think that our communities can absolutely benefit from this. This one is more of a quick return on, on your investment because it's a two-year program at the most versus the preschool, which would definitely be a long-term impact. But again, I think that if we help raise the level of education in our community, we will help decrease the need for certain services, which will help us move around our budgets to be able to really meet the new needs of our community, not continue to try to support the needs of our community where they are not necessarily moving the dial of where they stand. So let's go ahead and move forward. Potential budget again, 300,000 for the community college, 600,000 for the pre-K. Let's go ahead and move on. Vision 2028, this covers invest in Lake County's richest resource, our people, results in enhanced quality of life. Those come directly from Vision 2028. Let's go ahead and move forward. Measurables, use pre-K college and census data to get a baseline and see what changes have occurred due to this program. Challenges, this one's a tough one because it is a per-year funding. At this moment in time, I believe that we do have education as one of the four things as to what cannabis tax supports, but I cannot tell you how long cannabis taxes will be accrued in the future. I think that we definitely have potentially a five-year time life on this, but I don't know how much longer that would be after the fact. And so let's go ahead and move on. And so I gave a quick goal number three. I feel that after some of the conversations that we had, that our first-time homebuyer plan is not necessarily working for us. It's one of those where it's kind of a set up to fail type of programs. And also, building houses is not necessarily working for us because it's absolutely difficult to find developers who are willing to deal with the margins of profit that exist by building homes here in Lake County versus in other counties where the values of homes are so much higher. And so just, just to put it out there for conversation, provide 1.5 million dollars in seed money to build homes and do a lease to own, where they do not get themselves in a situation of foreclosures, they don't get themselves in a situation of becoming homeless because they lose their home. This would be more like a rental program with a lease to own contract. That way, we work with some sort of nonprofit to be able to manage and provide this program. This will reduce the potential downfall. The current programs with foreclosures can provide lower rental costs to ensure success in ownership and does not rely on low-income housing, which is basically one of the only reliance that we have here if we want to easily build homes. Let's go ahead on, next one. Measurables, number of homes, number of local homeownership. That one's pretty simple. The challenge is, is 1.5 million dollars does not build many homes, and this is a very long-term outcome versus short-term outcomes. And that is it for all of my goals.
Thank you, Chairperson Sabatier. That was a lot to process. Thank you for that. And we're going to move to Supervisor Crandall.
Hello, can you hear me?
No.
No. My microphone on, there we go. There it is. Thank you very much.
Sam muted you.
Yeah, he muted. He meant to mute you, but accidentally muted me. Anyhow, you know, I really appreciate those before me because they kind of, mine kind of tie in, I think. I'd like to say first and foremost that, you know, Vision 2028 is still a work in progress, and although I wasn't, you know, here during the initial inception of this, you know, ideal, I'm here to carry it forward with you. You know, one of the things I think we're having this is because we can't implement this by vision alone, we need you to be with us. And this is why I'm speaking to the employees and staff that usually we'd be in the room with like we had, you know, last year, you know, so I, we need you to be with us. We are dependent on you, and we are here to set up the right structures to get a shared vision and shared responsibility. Often, I have to remind myself that I serve not only the people of this county, but also the people such as yourselves who have chosen to be in this government business with us. My job and our job is to enable you to succeed in your work and live a balanced life, or else this will not get far, you know. So I really like, it kind of fits with what Supervisor Simon was talking about with workforce investment. I feel the same way, and, and some of my goals are going to fit Supervisor Sabatier's. And I, you know, I kind of wanted to start out by just saying, you know, we should just invest, invest in Dogecoin or cryptocurrency because we could probably like just make all sorts of money. like, just make all sorts of money on that. But I don't think there's anything in the, the law saying we can do that as a government, so let's do what we have to here. All right, let's see, next slide. So my first goal, it's, it's, I say it's my, my starting picture here, dilapidated docks. And so, one of the things we always talk about, you know, when it comes to Lake County, is, you know, the drive around the lakes, people using the lake, things of that nature. And so, you know, the dilapidated docks that you drive around and see are in the lake, and there, it's, there's lake bed annual fees per dock owner that are in place for, for that. And right now, they're at a certain specific threshold. Currently, there are many docks in Lake County that are not only eyesore, but dangerous to frequent lake users and homeowners. And we know that the county is responsible for the enforcement of this. However, county doesn't obtain a funding source for the cleanup and enforcement of this trouble, of these troubled properties, as of now. They do have funding per se, but it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not enough to carry out this enforcement as of now. So we, we'd like to determine, for me, one of my goals is to determine an amount and work with, of course, the staff in the county, to determine an amount or additional fee that would be implemented to abate docks in disrepair and in neglect, so that the county would obtain the funding to conduct the necessary funds required to repair or remove the docks and, and the lean, and the liens that are in place for the cost against these parcels. Repair is completely and utterly necessary for the quality of life for Lake County residents. You also have to consider that, you know, contaminations that are in place and the safety. Better docks, better experiences, cleaner and safer Lake County. That's kind of what I was just saying about safe, you know, safety. And we all know the boaters, fishermen, travel, travelers who frequent the lake and the highway corridors will feel safer, and they'll like, you know, not seeing the blight. Repairs and maintain docks limit not only blight, but also potential contamination and harm, which I said before. And so, I feel this fits the three, the three, one of the four ideals that we talked about when it comes to these goals, staff development leading to more effective use of public funds by being more efficient and responsive. So if we work with the necessary departments and county councils to develop legislation changes in order to make a pathway for this task. And we just need to implement a reasonable fee that provides the funding to accomplish this task and enable it to be self-sustaining. And so, I don't think really, I mean, we might be able to, you know, put some of the funds or direct some of the funds to go to this, but I think it'll be self-sustaining. And I'm pretty confident that the people that have docks will be like, yeah, I think we can do this, because it makes my dock look better, it makes, it makes my neighbor have a better situation, and we can, you know, have people enjoying Lake County more with that situation. And so, that's my first goal. The next one is, you know, we, we've been really hitting tax sales, defaulted tax sales for the last year, and probably longer, prior to, you know, my tenure here. And I just used the, kind of a, a number, I used 10,000, I'm pretty sure there's more. So we have more than 10,000 tax defaulted properties in Lake County. We know that a lot of those are probably part, you know, paper parcels and whatnot. But, you know, I just wanted to kind of give a, kind of a number to the figure. An average of 25,000, if we were to sell at least 10,000 properties, is about 250 million. So I kind of feel like we're sitting on a lot of assets. And this amount could drive revenue to our general fund. And we've been talking about that, because we've been having sales, and we've been doing, and I'm really proud of the tax collector's department for having these sales, even though at one time, they felt that they couldn't. And so, I think too, with our help, we can, we can, we can kind of get this going in a, in a more formidable way. So if we can try to work to impose a monthly tax default auction, I think we can chip away faster at this. And by doing so, I know that the first question would be, well, how are we going to do this? Because business as usual takes place, and it's very difficult for them to not only conduct their business as usual, but then they have to now work extra to get these tax defaulted properties sold. Well, you know, we have either cannabis funds or general funds that we can implement to hire qualified staff and resources that could, you know, limit that barrier to accomplishing this task. So if we work with the tax collector to finalize this fund for a position or positions, if need be, this person could be solely responsible for a monthly tax sale. This way, chipping away faster at that 10,000. Funding sources could be general fund or cannabis, either or. We could also look at imposing an administration fee in order to self-fund tax collector and kind of put more money back in their department, so they can do, they keep these things self-sustaining. I feel that this position will pay for itself once initiated and carried out. So then, we don't have to depend on the cannabis funds or general funds or whatever the case may be. And this is a very good return on investment, in my opinion. So, so another attribute to this is setting a priority criteria. Right now, we wait for five years, and then we put it on the, we put it on the tax sale. I, I, you know, I'm glad that we have something in place, you know, and, and it's, it's good to have different, you know, criteria that, to sell it upon. But the problem is, is that some folks unfortunately adjust to this, and they squat, and they dump, and all these other things. And so, what we end up having is depreciation and a lot of problems waiting for this to happen, which opens more blight and whatnot. So with a priority in place, we could look at, one, first, selling properties that obtain county, city, special district liens, abatement problematic properties. We look at those first and start streamlining those initially, rather than waiting for the timeframes. And of course, next would be single-family residents. Those would be second priority. Of course, they have to be tax defaulted. Lots with manufactured homes would be third. Buildable lots with utility, you know, properties that used to have a manufactured home or single-family dwelling at, at the home. And vacant lots would be, you know, of course, the, you know, the low, low guy. So I'm thinking too, that, you know, with approval of the board of supervisors, you know, this is required for us to, to actually have an approval for them to conduct a monthly sale. But it gives monthly feedback and progress reports. And, you know, there's also another attribute to this problem is property owners that won't sell. They're like, I'm just, I don't, I don't want to sell it, I don't want to deal with it. There's all sorts of different, other issues that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts, you know. So we could look at forgiving, lower, or lowering the delinquent tax amount and offer, you know, at a lower minimum bid. We can look at eminent domain options, and this is in regard to paper subdivisions possibly, or lots that never will be sellable, sealed bid options. And then, in turn, we can work legislatively to streamline sales that property owners refuse to sell, in order to alleviate potential problematic properties. And so, I give an example of the property that we dealt with here, that time when they built a fence, and we had to kind of go back and forth, because we built the fence and now they're back to it. You see what I'm saying? So this, those are problematic properties. The Lucerne First Avenue and Highway 20 where the lady was camping, that's another problematic property, because we know that once that person's gone, someone's going to come back. So that's why I feel it's, it's really important to streamline these sales and, and kind of get the assets that we have spent, use this funding towards necessary, you know, programs in our, in our, in our departments. And, you know, the goal is to invest funding into perpetuating initiatives that will pay for themselves and incrementally eliminate any road legacy issues that have hindered progress, safety, and quality of life in Lake County for too long. And so, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Scott, District 4.
Great. So I will wait for Jake to put the presentation up. If we can go to my first slide. There we go. So the first goal, to clean up our neighborhoods through code enforcement, comes right from Vision 2028. I believe as a board, we have already made code enforcement a priority by providing funds to support this program. We've also provided some of this funding through the cannabis, cannabis tax revenue, also looking at how our sheriff can help us with code enforcement. But now, we need to make a plan. We need to make priorities and have an idea what success would look like. How many properties can we tag in a month? How many can we get cleaned up? This would also apply to abandoned vehicles and illegal grows. How much money will it take to start making a difference? We know that this work needs to be done to eliminate blight and bring up our property values and community morale. I'm all about pictures, so go ahead and go to slide two. This first picture is an illegal dump site in northern Lakeport. I heard from constituents that there had been a garbage dump, so my family and I thought we would go out and help and clean it up. We were overwhelmed by the amount of garbage and items left on this site. Needless to say, we were unable to clean it all up. It took code enforcement to go out there, to have it cleaned up, and the property owners had to make a change on the property to deter legal dumping. This took over about two years to accomplish. If you could go to the next slide. This is a picture showing what the property owners did to make sure that the property was secured. It is an absolute...
Who turned on the bass?
It's an incredibly large piece of property. So there is these boulders that go around the whole outside of the property. And then, when it starts going into the trees, they have a, it looks like a welded metal fence. And since they've done that, we no longer have dumping in that area. If you could go to the next slide. This next picture, I don't know if you guys recognize it, but it was a dump site off of Soda Bay. We took action on this last year as a board to attach a lien to the property and have it cleaned up. I have now heard from constituents in that area that squatters have moved back in. So our actions to clean it up is, it's, it's back again. So we need to figure out what actions can we take to make sure this doesn't continue. Can we work with the tax collector, as Supervisor Crandall pointed out, to get these properties on the auction block? I think they need to rise as a priority, because it's just going to continue. To recap, we have put funding into personnel and to the cleanup of property, but we don't have a plan of attack. And we need to figure out what success looks like and how we're going to tackle the blight for the betterment of Lake County. Next slide. I believe my next goal is taking care of what we have, which really goes to the quality of life of people here in Lake County. Go to the next slide. This is a picture of a cleanup day in Scotts Creek. We worked on removing debris that was not connected to the creek bed or sides. As you can also see, we are standing on a large gravel bar that slows the movement and limits the water's capacity. For the creeks to run at capacity, we must make gravel and debris removal from the creeks a priority. I understand that many rules and regulations govern this work, but this should not stop us from working to move forward, to make sure we're protecting our creeks, wildlife, people, and property. Next slide. When the creek breaches the bank, it floods not only property, but also the roads. This then eliminates access for school buses and emergency personnel. Next slide. This is a picture of Adobe Creek in the Finley area. It shows overgrown bushes and trees that slow or stop the water's movement in the wintertime. I believe it was two years ago, when the town of Finley was underwater, when the creek breached the banks, I met with the Finley market owner, and he stated he had never experienced flooding such as this, and said that we used to take care of the overgrown brush in the creeks. I've contacted Scott DeLeon about this issue, and there's just not enough funding in the flood zones to be able to take care of this problem. So we need to be looking elsewhere to be able to make sure that we are taking care of our creek beds proper, properly. I know this is not just a problem here in District 4, but I also know that District 3 has a problem, and also District 1. I'm not sure if District 5 or 2 have issues with the creek beds. Slide 9, next one. This is just another picture showing large debris that can clog, clog up the creek beds. And when they can break loose, this is actually, this tree is right before a bridge. So if it were to break loose when the water came, it would have taken out that bridge, or just end up in our, in Clear Lake, and could be damaging boats, or just, you know, end up floating out there. Next slide. My last two slides are just showing how high the water does get in Scotts Valley when it does breach the banks. Go to the next slide. I took this picture, actually, I went out there, I believe it was like two years ago, and a constituent had a tractor, and he says, I want to show you the water. So I got on the tractor with him, and we drove through all the flooded area to just fully understand the capacity of, of the water out there. I actually saw constituents, there was a husband pulling a wife, she was in the boat, and he was taking her so they could get to their car, to be able to get to town. I know we cannot completely eliminate flooding, but we have to make a difference on the degree of the flooding or the time that people are flooded. What is our plan to create creeks that support the runoff without breaching the banks and sending debris into Clear Lake? We need to support wildlife, but also the health and safety of Lake County residents. So those are my, my two goals.
No, I see Michelle Scully speaking, but I don't hear Michelle Scully speaking. Her box is lighting up, which means that her mic is working on her end, but we're not hearing her.
Jake, I'll mute and unmute myself and see if that helps.
We can hear you now.
Okay. I said thank you as Supervisor Scott, and we're going to move to District 5 with Supervisor Fisca.
Great. So if we can just get that first slide up. So I, I, I think as you look through my goals and priorities, you might see how all of yours fit in. I have a background in strategic planning, so this is really what I love to do. We look at reimagining Lake County. How do we get there? How do we get to that vision? And how can we do better? How can we make this better? So if we look at the next slide, strong strategic planning. The first thing that you do is you ask, you know, where are we now? And where do we want to go? And the first step is coming up with your mission, your vision, and your values. And we have that with our Vision 2028. I think we can make a little adjustments to it, as you'll see a little bit later. But, but that's really the first place that you start. And the next is you start to set your long-term priorities. And that's where you come up with your specific goals. And that's really the place that we're at right now. The next part of that is looking at your action plan. How do you get there? How do you implement? How do you manage? And then, you make sure that you have these, this strategy as a living document that you review, and you revise, and you hit your measurables. And that's what a complete, strong strategic plan looks like. So I'm hoping this is the beginning of building on that. If we go to the next slide. So the first goal for me, when I look at a plan, is to look at our plans. And what we've got to do is update our planning documents. We have to assess where we are and where we want to be. And I think all of your priorities that you've laid out today kind of fit in that box. And now, once we have our plans in place, then we develop our long-term goals. And this is really where we engage with the community, and how the different communities around our county have visions for what they want their communities to be like. Next slide. We look at Lake County's general plan. It was adopted in 1981, and it was updated in 2008. So what was Lake County like in 1981? And that's the basis of our planning. Think about everything that's changed since 2008, which is our most recent update. And consider how these elements could improve the health and well-being of our residents if they were modernized. So here are our general plan elements. And it's kind of hard to tell, but 12, 13, and 14 are in teal. And those elements, we could add, as we update the other elements, which could increase eligibility to substantial funding opportunities and address more of our current needs. So that would be adding environmental justice, air quality, and economic development equity. But the plans that we currently have, or the elements in our current plan, community profiles, land use, housing, public facilities and services, transportation, circulation, health and safety, noise, open space conservation, recreation, geothermal, water resources, and agriculture. Just consider the Just consider the amount of changes that's happened within those elements over just the past decade. All right, next slide. Here are our area plans. You see our oldest plan, 1988, our newest plan, 2010. Think about the changes that occurred since 1988, when our oldest plan was updated and 2010, when our latest plan was updated. And how have the profiles of these communities evolved? And consider the impact disasters have had on each of these communities. Next slide. So Lake County has been in a constant state of reaction over the past decade due to extraordinary events. Recession, fire, floods, drought, pandemic now, climate change events. And this will not change. It's time for us to adapt to a new way of living and develop strategies that will enable agility and resilience. Next slide. We have the opportunity to reimagine how we want to live, grow, educate and thrive in the future. Embrace the latest technologies and infrastructure, diverse housing opportunities, new live-work opportunities post-pandemic, community amenities, parks, trails, open spaces, climate change resiliency, public health and safety, disaster preparedness and prevention, transportation systems. These are just a few of the things that we could reimagine. And now is the time to make that investment as we plan to move forward. Next slide. Goal number two is prioritize housing. That's already come up today. We can start programs, but I think we need to build the capacity to promote the creative development of communities in Lake County. Create a housing coordinator or a community development corporation, a CDC, like some of our other counties have. They can be laser focused on housing, but that, that corporation could also be used to focus on economic development and other priorities. So the housing element, oh, sorry, next slide. Housing element is the only element of our plan that's been updated. And that was important to update because we were missing out on funding opportunities. So as housing continues to be a critical need for our community, we must develop innovative solutions to address the difficulties our residents face, especially as our population continues to grow. We've got to deal with affordable housing for families, seniors, disabled workforce, homeless, rebuild homes lost in the fires and housing rehabilitation and new development opportunities. Next slide. Goal number three is develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness and recovery. We have to commit to getting better, stronger and more efficient each year in developing strategies for disaster prevention, preparedness and recovery. And I just want to point out that there is no language that supports this in the current Vision 2028. So we're going to need to add some language there. Next slide. As all of you know, Lake County has the most experience in disaster work. Let's recognize that we can always improve and strive to be better. So these are just some things that we can focus on. We're already working on quite a bit of these. But part of this goal is continue to focus. So we have a robust collaboration across all of our departments, organizations, cities and tribes. And we have a lot of that started right now, but we need to build on that and move forward. We have our CMAT, which is a huge opportunity for us coming next month. Adopting innovative technologies for early warning systems and hardened critical infrastructure. Improve communication and outreach to our most vulnerable. This, I think this is an area we really need to focus on. Seniors, disabled, those who are isolated and those non-tech users. They're very vulnerable when we have to have an evacuation or PSPS or heavy smoke days. And I feel like this is an area we really need to grow. Update, review and implement our critical documents. So our health and safety element is from 2008 and that is where we would address these issues. We have our CWPP, which was from 2009, update in progress. And our hazardous mitigation plan, which is continually updated with the disaster council. Next slide. So here is where we can update our Vision 2028. Vision 2028 signals our board's commitment to enhance public safety, wildfire mitigation and promoting firewise practices among all residents and property owners are key elements. And I'm asking that we specifically note that in our priority statement. Enhance public safety, protect our residents and serve them well. Develop and maintain a high standard of disaster prevention, preparedness and recovery. No county is more experienced in disaster response. However, we must be proactive and vigilant in limiting risk to Lake County's communities. Preventative work is never complete and we have to continually adjust our aims and expect more, further and further enhancing the safety of all residents. This proposed change to our Vision 2028 statement is a meaningful recognition of the fact that we can always improve and strive to be better. We must always make a related commitment to get better, stronger and more efficient each year in developing strategies for disaster prevention, preparedness and recovery. This requires community-wide effort and coordination and no one is better positioned than the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, the Fire Safe Council that we are developing and our board to promote this critical work. Next slide. Last slide. So strategic goals to support Lake County's Vision 2028. The first priority is long-term planning, focus on a long-range planning. The goal is to update the planning documents. And, you know, we know what our community development is facing with the workload. This is an opportunity to have consultants engaged to do this work, but we have to commit to it. The priority number two is housing. And here the goal, we create a housing coordinator or a community development corporation. Our third priority, my priority, advancing disaster preparedness, prevention and recovery. And the goal is to build the capacity to impact, to implement the critical priorities that we've been bringing up and talking about. And we've made some steps this year with our commitment to the Risk Reduction Authority. We're putting our COAT in place. There's a lot of traction here, but we just have to continue focus on, on building that capacity. And that's what I have. And it's very hard to breathe in this mask.
Thank you, thank you Supervisor. Wow, so you guys put, your board put so much thought into this and it's given us 30,000-foot views to boots on the ground. So there will be a lot to discuss now that you can have your open discussion. And I categorized things a bit because as a few of you said, there's a lot of overlap there in ways that things could tuck in beside each other. And I kind of feel like Supervisor Pisca, like you might have been eavesdropping on the EDTF meetings because they will be presenting their, a second quarter report. Carol, is that May 6th?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, so a few of the same things that you've talked about, which is super encouraging to me. Turk, yes?
Sorry to interrupt you, Michelle. I just wanted to ask the chair if at this point, would it be helpful if we took a pause and created a slide that had all, at least the basic terms of the goals that were suggested? So you have something you can look at and, you know, kind of focus on all of them?
That way we could put that up and share it on the screen for the public to see and for us to see? Yeah, I think that would be helpful. A five-minute break be good or 10?
I think 10 would give us.
And speaking of scheduling and breaks, I was thinking that since this goes until one and the department heads are a significant part of the second half, what would you think of an 11 o'clock stop for this with a 10, 15-minute break? And then back to the department head section?
I'm sorry, I was just working on the.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with a break, but I don't know that we need it to be a hard break, just in case we're still in the heat of the discussion. So I think we play by ear, but with this idea that yes, we're, we're looking at a potential break at 11 o'clock.
Okay, sounds good.
And so let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break right now so we can get those goals posted. So we can all take a look at everything at once rather than our individual screens.
So Mr. Chair Matthew was preparing that sort of bullet point summary of the goals. And I believe he's sitting with, oh, here it is, okay. Here we go. So I'm, we've got it, we're forwarding it to Jake.
Okay, it looks like our goals will be popping up real soon. And I know that there was a comment, at least in our Zoom, asking about public comment. Right now, we finished our presentations. We will continue with some discussions and deliberations. And eventually we will open up for public comment as that is an important facet of this process.
So Jake now has the slide in his possession and.
And he's sharing the screen.
He's putting it up, there you go. So again, these, I asked staff to just, you know, make these kind of a bullet point without detail, just to help you.
So I was making notes myself and categorizing them. As you all had mentioned, they follow three, maybe four cohesive themes. Economic development, what does that look like? Chairperson Sabatier introduced the concept of really what's called community economic development, which is a way of looking at it and how is your community supported from the ground up, from everyone's health and well-being? And that includes education and opportunities. And a broader theme of community, how do we take care of what we have? Supervisor Crandall talked about blight. Supervisor Scott talked about our creek beds and blight and dumping and squatting. And then we have updating our foundational documents. Do we, this is an opportunity to look at them as an opportunity for strategic planning as well. So I found that the things really kind of tucked in neatly in those common themes.
I have a question for facilitator. What do you think would be the, because we're looking to dwindle this from 12 down to potentially two? And I'm guessing that it could be more than two, it could be less than two, but approximately two. What is your strategy on how to get to that? For, for us to slowly get rid of the items rather than always having all of the items in front of us and slowly dwindle it down?
I think the big themes are big categories, you know, economic development. What does that look like? And the Economic Development Task Force has really taken on a lot of these conversations and will be, as you know, and will be reporting out on that with observations and recommendations in May. And some of that, I think, works very nicely with this in terms of what we're finding is when we say economic development, what are, what are we really talking about? And who's going to do that work? And so I feel if we had a really broad heading like economic development in terms, and you introduced so profoundly what I consider community economic development, which is the holistic approach to it, the well-being of our citizens. And Supervisor Pisca noted that when she talked about housing, which is like, who's going to do this work? So I, I think who's going to do this work is probably a really salient place to start. And I know that you had intended to address that with the department heads of the recognition of all the struggles that we've been in as a community and with vacancies, what it's, what it's really like to ask more of people doing so much already. So I think if we looked at this in taking care of what we have and could put under that things like the dogs, the blight, creek bed management and then the planning, long-range documents, which the EDTF will also be bringing back in May. And under that, I believe there was also a discussion of how do we look at economic development and housing in a more cogent, focused way going forward? Does that sound realistic to you?
And that's not going to be up to me, that's going to be us. And, and I guess my, my one concern that I would share is if we have, if we look only at the categories and not the goals, that we end up with still a lot of goals, which means that it makes it very difficult to achieve the goals. I still believe that minimizing our goals to ensure success is probably going to be our best process. But that's just my opinion. I'd have to look at the rest of the board on their feedback and input.
I would think that if we gave this opportunity for the board to comment on what they see and common themes that they're seeing, that we might find ourselves in that direction.
And, and I'm okay with, I'm okay with moving forward in order to get to there, yes. If you feel that we will get to that same result, then I'm good with that.
So can we open it up to comment to the board?
I will get started. I see no pens up. Let's, let's put up our pens if we have any comments. There's some things on here that I feel are duplication of work that's already being done. And I think that, that today it's perfectly fine to support the things that are already in the works and to put some resources behind them to ensure they're happening. But I think that those, that there's a potential to do that through the avenues in which they're already in existence. So for example, number two, economic development, continue ongoing work of task force. I think that with the funding that's being made available from cannabis taxes specifically for that and the hard work that the task force is already working on, that I think that, that that goal already exists and that we, we don't need a. I would like to see a further goal than just what is being done over at the task force. I know that also housing, which was one of my goals as well, as well as brought to us by Supervisor Pisca, is something also that the task force is looking into. And, and I know we've had a discussion about our, where our housing authority is or housing commission is and what their capacity is. And, and so those are things that will be brought to us as well. Because I, while it's not an impossibility, I would prefer to come out of what else are we going to do versus what are we going to support that's already being done? Or else we wouldn't be doing it if there wasn't a level of support there already.
And towards that end, I completely agree with you. And this is kind of cart before the horse because the whole board didn't hear, won't hear the report until next month. But your presentation about a community revitalization grant and looking really at economic development in terms of community economic development, do you feel like the task force could facilitate ongoing conversations of that by perhaps hosting a meeting that focuses on specifically that?
And, and on that one, I would say if it's a goal coming out of this conversation, that it could potentially be moved to the task force. But I know the task force has quite a large number of things to tackle already. But it all depends on, it, it all depends on, on what the rest of the board feels. I think that community revitalization fits into a lot of the stuff that Supervisor Scott mentioned, which was clean up our neighborhoods and taking care of what we have. Because it's not necessarily just about creek beds possibly, it could be more. But. Because it's not necessarily just about creek beds possibly. It could be more. But, yeah. Supervisor Simon, you had your pen up first.
So I, I sort of feel like, I mean, I love the idea of community revitalization, but I feel like that's a little bit cart before the horse because our plans are so out of date. And it's going to take a significant amount of time and resources to focus on the area plans. But that's where you get the community's vision on how they want to be. And it's not what we want that community to look like. It's what they want to look like. And so that's a very long, like a year-long period of community meetings and town halls and letting that community set the direction of how they want to grow or how they want to be revitalized. You know, it's not us telling them how they should be revitalized. For example, like, is lighting really necessary in all communities? It's not. Some communities are dark skies. They don't want lighting. So I, that's just one example of the community not leading this conversation.
And towards that point also, I hesitate to confirm that it will be a recommendation, but it will be in the EDT, the Economic Development Task Force report next month. And that was one of the topics that we've addressed quite rigorously is bringing forward the need for updating foundational documents. And as you so saliently expressed, within that process is going back to the communities and having their input. So my hope is that that is very close to what we will be moving forward with.
So is our intention today to set these priorities and then the task force will come back? And it's a little bit a difficult place for us that are not on that task force to be in because I don't want to let these priorities go because they're going to be brought to us next month. This is our opportunity to set the direction. And if we set that direction and we're giving more supportive information next month, then that's great. But I don't want to put them off until then.
And just while that's not an impossibility, that it goes to the Economic Development Task Force, the idea was to create a roadmap ad hoc, a roadmap to Vision 2028 ad hoc committee that would focus specifically on these goals and hash out the details. Because obviously, we're very vague on the details here. It's just ideas being shared of what the priorities could look like. But this would be separate from what the EDTF is already working on. At least that was the original, the original thoughts when going through this process of the Governance Workshop, looking at 2028, what are some stepping stones and milestones that we want to try to hit in order to lead us to a full-blown, yes, we've reached our goals, and not adding more bandwidth to the Economic Development Task Force, but looking at it from a different perspective, which is why in the, the idea was maybe not so much infrastructure, maybe not so much specifically economic development and looking at other things that were a part of Vision 2028, since that was already going to be the focus of the Economic Development Task Force.
Well, and I get that, but it seems like this is where we set those priorities and goals. And then the work is either divided below to that task force or the roadmap, roadmap task force?
The roadmap to Vision 2028.
Okay. So that's where they would be disseminated. So this is where we set the priorities, correct?
Yes, even though the task force already has its work at this moment in time, but it could affect the work it does in the third quarter.
Right.
Supervisor Simon?
You know, hopefully, like I said, we'll come out with the priorities. And obviously, you see, everybody has, you know, their own ideas as we move forward as a board. But I just go back to number one, investing in the workforce. And, you know, like I said, since coming on the board as a supervisor, it's been one of my main goals and priorities. I know it's in process and we are working on it. But it is the key, the backbone to achieving 2028. We had these discussions. We started moving forward to talk about the class comp and, you know, to address the vacancy rates, retention, training, all these things. Even consultants, when they're talking about being brought in, need the workforce and the staff to work with to get done what we need to have done here. They don't just come in and do the work with no support from our departments. And, you know, for me, it's real simple. You know, we all want to see things done. We all have these ideas. But supporting and filling those vacancies, giving opportunities for what we've started to do as a board, as far as investing in our workforce, I think is number one. And I'll always stay focused on that. There are plenty of other ideas and opportunities we can do. But until we get that really fixed, I think we've made a great step with the class and comp. We got more work to do by the end of 2021, and I believe it's accomplishable. So I'll continue on the Economic Development Task Force, pushing economic development projects in my district. You know, always saying, hey, we're open for business here. But once that business or someone is interested in coming here, they got to go deal with community development, planning, environmental health, all of our departments, everybody that's involved with putting in a new project or something that hasn't existed before. And I just want to support those folks in our departments all the way through all of our community because we talk about code enforcement, animal control, everything. And we know the limitations. As we sit here as a board, we cannot say that we haven't all got a call and then we go and we know that we need more help with our staffing and other things. I know we're moving in the right direction. We're early on some of those changes. But for me, that's the number one priority. All the other stuff will happen if we can get those done. And I know that puts pressure on us. You have all this political, but it just is number one. I come from, you know, I just go on a background. I think from, EJ can speak to this too, from coming from a cultural background, from tribal nations, you know, internally, you got to build that economy. You got to support your workforce. You got to give them opportunities. Can't tell people how they're going to get healthier, better, other opportunities. You just need to provide the workforce to present opportunities to them to make their lives better and also bring more economic development diversity through the community. So I'll just, you're always going to hear this from me forever, as long as I sit on this diocese. I get to be up here. I get my face on the camera, have all these ideas. But we know who does the real work. It's our staff. It's everybody in this room. And we need to just continue to work on and support them. And for me, for one priority, only one, you know, that everything else will get done if we support that workforce, number one. So those are my thoughts. You guys know where I stand. It will not change. So that's my one thing I'd like to see come out of this today is a priority of getting that done to support the workforce. So I'll keep it simple. That's it.
Supervisor Scott?
Actually, EJ was before me.
Oh, okay.
I don't look to my right. I'm left-handed. Sorry.
Okay, thank you for that. I just, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, I feel that the dilapidated docs was just something I threw on there because you asked for two, you know. Really more concentrated. I know we're already doing tax defaulted sales. I just kind of want to magnify it because I also believe in doing things that are going to support themselves afterwards. And so that's why I think if we could streamline and prioritize the sales, not only does it put them in a position to kind of ride without training wheels, if you will, but it also inspires good property owners that come in and buy properties and alleviate these problem properties. And also inspires business and contractors and whatnot. And one of the things that we notice about what we're dealing with in general and overall kind of, I guess, the overall kind of, I don't like to say behavior because it's not behavior. We're forced to be in a position where we're limited because we have limited resources. Well, if we can ensure that we aren't in limited resources and we're in more of an abundant situation, we could start taking care of problems without worrying about being limited. I don't blame anybody for saying, I don't know if I can do that. It's like saying, can you eat that food right there? I can't. I'm full. That's what our workers are saying. I can't because I'm full. They don't have the resources. But if we provide those resources with the assets we're sitting on, I think that they, they'll be able to say, I can do that. Let me hire 20 people to do this or five people or whatever. I'm just throwing that out there. So that's why my main one is streamlining that. And that possibly could be done without having to be in this. I'm just, you asked for two ideas, so I gave them. One of the things that I believe in is I always want to make something better than what it was before I got it. And if I'm not here, I want to pass it on to someone who can keep it going. And so that's my, that's why, that's all I wanted to say about that. Thanks.
Well, I think with all these goals here, this is why Lake County has, or we, the five of us came up with so many goals, things we want to tackle. I think it's a vicious circle. We need to stabilize our workforce to be able to do this work that we want to get done, to be able to improve our communities and make them cleaner. We have so many problem properties, and so we need to get them on the tax sale so we don't continue doing abatements on the properties. Our communities won't get cleaned up unless we do that. But if we don't have enough code enforcement or people in CDC to do the work, that won't get done. So I would have to agree with Supervisor Simon that most definitely we have to be focused on our workforce and how we can continue to get them to be able to do the goals that we are setting forth for them to do. I know we're already working on that, but again, it's a vicious circle. We need to have economic development to be able to pay our staff, to be able to do the work, to keep them stabilized. So I think as a board, we have a hard decision here of really what we're going to put forward to be able to accomplish what we want to see, which is a very hefty lift there.
Supervisor Scott, excuse me, to clarify then, would you say that you're supporting prioritizing the workforce so that it can carry forward the work of blight and code enforcement?
Yes, and everything else that we have on there. If we don't have the workforce to do the work, we can't get our goals done. But I think we have been working on trying to work on our workforce. So that has been a goal really that has been set out there. So I don't know if, we're trying to come up with different goals because that has been our number one goal is to invest in our workforce. So I'm not really sure what direction, if we want to add to that or if we want to make sure that we are continuing to make sure that we're looking at that.
So that, that was my thought, is that it already is a goal. And the default taxes is a goal too that we've been working on this year. And this is a, this is a revenue generating stream where we can pay people more. So I feel like we're already working on those. So are we looking for new priorities or are we reprioritizing everything that we have been working on?
That's why I mentioned that if it doesn't get chosen, I'll still work on these on the side regardless, so.
Because we have pathways happening.
The way that I saw this is we have currently, and I know that it's possibly debatable, one-time money from cannabis tax. When 80% or more is early activation, I see that as one-time money because those are temporary licenses. Hopefully, we'll get to more. But we have one-time money that we can utilize to do something that we're not doing rather than to do something that we're already doing because those things do have the capability to be supported or else we wouldn't be doing them in the first place. We have been seeing some changes on all these other things. I think that, I mean, it's a very crude picture that I'm going to paint, but we can have all the great resorts and all the great wineries and all the great changes in economic development. But if our neighborhoods look the same, then I don't think we're doing our job. And I think it's about changing the life of living in Lake County, which is the priority of why people elect us to be here to make those changes. Not so that businesses can thrive only, not so that our workforce can be paid well only, but so that the lifestyle and the culture of what it's like when you walk down the street and you want to take your kids out to play and you want to go to school is something that you can walk outside and say, this is, there's nothing wrong with this picture. But we walk outside and there's a lot of changes and a lot of things we need to change, whether it's roads, whether it's enhancing our parks, whether it's making more beautiful houses. It's just, we have, again, it's kind of like a time capsule where we walk out and we stopped in certain areas, not all areas, but in certain areas, something stopped in the 70s and got frozen in time. And we have yet to ever really put in the resources to try to revitalize those places. It's not going to be what it was in the past. But if we don't try to revitalize, we're saying, you're perfectly fine in your living situation and the atmosphere you're living in, we're going to work on these other things and hopefully it'll impact you. I think that we are representative of the people. We have the chance to change people's lives rather than, and I want to invest in workforce. But if that's what we leave with today, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not going to be very, I'm not going to feel very great that we went outside of the box and said paying specific people more than what they're already, the average income, we're above that in our, in our overall staff compared to the people we represent. I want to help continue move that forward. I'm not saying stop. But that, in my opinion, is not my high priority versus everyday situations of how can we change that experience in Lake County? Investors, if they see a plan of how we're moving things forward in the community, not for our workforce necessarily, are going to invest here. They're not going to invest because we pay people more. So I think that that's what I'm looking for is what is our return on our investment of a priority that we're putting in place that is going to change the quality of life and bring people's interest to Lake County to want to invest? There are so many beautiful areas around the lake, but because of leftovers that we have yet to ever really take the time to deal with because it's tough to take the time to deal with so many of the different issues we have, people come in here with high aspirations and never really fulfill what they would like to do here because the pieces aren't set for them to do, for them to do so. And I think that we can change the idea of investing in one of the, I hate using the word, but it's the word that comes to mind, one of the cheapest areas in the state of California to invest right next to a lake, so close to two metropolitan areas. But we have to make some changes before that investment will really come trickling in. And I think that we can change people's lives by looking at certain parts of what's on our goals versus the possibility of changing people's lives. I think that the conversation is difficult. And I don't know how we're, I would like to leave here with a new goal, not just an old goal and saying we like it because or else it wouldn't be a goal to begin with. We've already stated that we liked it. We already stated that this was something that we would invest time in. And I hope that we can possibly maybe look at, since there's 12 items, maybe getting four votes, raising our hands on ones that we like and then trickling it down to only four left over, hopefully, if that's the case, as long as we don't all vote for tons of different ones. And then eventually shortening and shortening that conversation to something that's much tighter where we do end up with one or two goals, new goals. Because again, we have funding that is available to us and we have an opportunity to do something new, something that hasn't been done, something that needs to be done. And that's what I hope that we can walk away with.
Well, I think you just sold my goal of planning documents. Because we do have this opportunity to spend this money on something that will matter, that will carry us forward, that will affect the health, well-being, safety, education, the rebuilding. All of our communities are stagnant because our planning documents are out of date. We have brilliant people on our staff that want to move us forward. And this is not the most glamorous thing to have to do, to redo these plans. This is not. This is what hasn't been done. It's not fun. But it's important because you're literally calling this our roadmap committee. And our planning documents are our roadmap. And we have this golden opportunity. We have funding coming in from all places. We have potentially a massive infrastructure package coming. You know, we have to have everything in place so that we can take advantage of more funding. So we leverage what we have now with the opportunities that are not far down the road. We can't miss any more opportunities. We've missed CDBG money in the past because our housing element wasn't updated. It's updated now. Is it where it should be? No, still needs improving, still needs to be carried forward. But this is the opportunity to use that to grow, to look at where we want to be, to reimagine everything about our community. And then we set those goals and those benchmarks and we start moving down the road with those plans.
Supervisor, I appreciate everything you just said. And you had brought up earlier, you know, if work's already being done, does that preclude you? And I think you made a very valiant case for saying it does not. And it also, in the plan process, if the EDTF does bring back specifics of what that timeline and cost would be, then that's just great. timeline and cost would be, then that's just great. I mean, that's just brings your goals, if this is one further along, and it also does address the community input aspect. And I think there is also an opportunity, dependent on how that process goes forward, to have the discussion about what does community economic development look like, which Chairperson Sabatier had alluded to with health and wealth.
And I think for myself, I don't, it wasn't that long ago that we had this discussion that we were going to be looking at our area plans and starting with our oldest and updating them. So I was under the impression we were already doing that.
No.
So I definitely agree, it's something we need to do to be able to build our community. And I kind of had this thought that Supervisor Sabatier was looking at our cannabis funds when he asked us to put these goals up. And that's why I went to that first goal, because we have put money into our last budget. I know we put quite a bit of money into cleaning up with code enforcement. We put money for our sheriff to work with our code enforcement, but we don't have a plan, or we don't have an idea of what success looks like. We've already put money there. What are we wanting to get out of it? What area should we be focusing on? Are we just focusing on the whole community? What's our major priority? I know with Lake County, just in the last like two months, it's just been like abandoned vehicle zone for every corner you turn to, there's an abandoned vehicle. So, you know, I know we have a committee that works on that and there's funding, but, you know, what is our plan? What is our ultimate goal? What do we want to see? How long should those vehicles be there? How long are we, you know, we need to have a plan. So I think for myself, some of these I thought we were already working on. So maybe we do need to rehash them, have this conversation, and make sure that the things that need to come first are being worked on.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, you know, I know we're going to go around and around. I completely agree. You know, we've had the general plan conversation, the area plan conversations, we're going to get started. You know, I think as we know, sitting in a new industry here, has really overwhelmed community development. You know, it all goes back to whatever priorities we're setting, we need the workforce to get that done, you know, to just, because the general plan, right, two years, two to three years for an update. I think an area plan is going to take you, you know, at least a year, maybe more than that, 18 months. So all of those, you know, there are so many other priorities and implementation things that are happening right now that, you know, once again, I'll just keep saying it all day, whether we're working on it right now, we haven't got there yet. So it's a goal, we're working towards solidifying the workforce, but continues. Whatever we come up with, we're going to need that workforce to implement those general plan amendments and updates, and that does get us to the Economic Development Task, you know, economic development over the next decade. You know, what'd you say, it was updated in 2008? And so now we're 21, 13 years out. So that is the next decade, if we can get that updated and started. So, you know, and once, I'll just, all day long, you're going to hear me, workforce investment, that's where we need to be at. We've made some steps forward, we're slowly chipping away at it, but until we get there, there's always going to be these challenges. You know, closing that 20% vacancy rate is going to be huge. And then it goes into the training, you know, the retention, you know, and I'll just keep talking about that because ultimately, we're all going to be getting calls, everything done, but to even to do. But I'm on board with updating the general plan because that is our roadmap to the economic development, needs to be changed. Heard that from the community members many different times. If we just do that, we can start to open that door, but we need the workforce to do it, so.
And I'll just respond to Supervisor Scott, that we've been in a reactive mode for so long, and I don't like living in a reactive mode. Right after the Valley Fire, I called together my friends and neighbors. We've just been back in the area about a week or two, and I brought everybody out to a field, and I just said, how, this is an opportunity. This is a terrible situation, but this is a beautiful opportunity. Let's start the conversation on how we want this community to look in 10 years and 20 years and 30 years. And bringing the people together and setting those priorities so that we can move in a proactive direction has made all this, has changed everything for the whole community because we have a common vision. We all have different ideas, you know, but we work together because we know where we want to be. It's not exact, you know, it's a little vague, but we have an idea. And that's why we formed the Cockberry Council, and the Cockberry Council's main priority was to have their plan updated. And so before I got on the board and you all made the decision to start updating the area plans, it was decided to start with the oldest first, but that work has not begun. And it was supposed to go out to a consultant, and it, you know, it just, we've been busy with so many things, but that's the problem. You get in that cycle of being busy with so many things that you forget to do the long-range planning. And we have the opportunity to get the consultants on board, so it's not a huge drain on our CDD. And we have willing participation in our communities that want to do the work. And this is just pretty much the best time ever. We have everybody in the world making different decisions about how they want to live and work and where their priorities are for their personal lives and their private lives, and people that want to be coming up here and working remotely. You know, the world is open now, so this is the opportunity to do it.
And towards that point, Supervisor Simon alluded to the timeline of this. Possibly if that is your, one of your goals, which I know it is, that you're putting forward, is that there will be an opportunity for the board to see if there's a way to accelerate that process through, maybe it might cost more or a particular kind of a contractor, but that might be an option too.
And Supervisor Crandall, you had something?
Yeah, so I was just looking at the, everything written, and another thing to mention is, before we kind of take heed to what will be kept or whatnot, I think the public probably has some things to say about it. But I do know, like, for example, for my two goals, and I'll just say this for mine, if they could be implemented, again, on my own, I can do that, but also, for example, the streamlined defaulted property tax sales, I could bring that when it comes to deciding the budget, when we're talking about cannabis funds and getting seed money that way, or something like that. So maybe there's things we can already attach to the end of some of these and say, this can be done another time here. This can be done, this is already being done, and it's already our overall mindset. So that way, we can identify which ones that we're going to continue with as the two. We can start eliminating the process, you know, because some of them, like, for example, dilapidated docks and mine and Tina's, they go together. So like, you know, and those can be done at a different time, on a different initiative or something like that. I'm just trying to lessen the, you know, the amount so we can tag them on, just trying to help.
So what I would like to offer is just to kind of cross off some items and bring them together into one, because I'm looking at taking care of what we have, I'm looking at clean up our neighborhoods, I'm looking at dilapidated docks, and I'm looking at community revitalization. To me, those all somewhat fit under the same guise of category of how do we clean up an area, and that area can include natural habitats rather than just residential, because they all interface together and eventually they, they're not unique to one another. If you have a beautiful natural habitat surrounding a community growth boundary, it's going to be conducive to positive investment, positive growth, both in property taxes and in people investing in the area. And so I would like to maybe put all of those together in a category where, at this moment, I know that code enforcement is working on stuff, but are they, what is the overall plan to have long-term change? What is the overall plan? Are they focused on something? Because my belief is, the way I've always seen code enforcement behave, and I know that right now they are working on a task force for the North Shore, but that's only code enforcement and the sheriff, it's not anything else. And I think that what I see a lot of code enforcement do is, there's so much to be done that it's like taking one small scoop of sand from every beach in California, you will see no difference in what each one of those individual beaches are versus if you have a very focused attempt and you take a bulldozer on a beach and you really move some sand, then you will see some change in that one beach. And I think that unfortunately, because it's a large county, there's so many different problems to deal with from the code municipal code perspective, that it's hard to really be able to see the change versus if it was focused. And so if we can have a conversation with CDD and the sheriff and whoever are stakeholders for that type of program to discuss what does that look like with our docks? What does that look like with revitalizing a community? What does that look like? I lost everything that I was reading.
I'm sorry, I'm replacing it. I didn't know, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I didn't know you were reading it. But I'm replacing it. Now it is in a Word document that we can sort of plug and play with it based on some of the discussion. So there it is.
My goal is to just shrink from 12, and if we could put those four under one, because they all seem to be somewhat similar, let's go ahead and put it there. And while I don't disagree that we need to update our documents, I think we can do that in literally almost one fell swoop. It does create a certain level of capacity where we can look for a consultant. No, I'm talking about one fell swoop. We can get a consultant, we can contract with somebody, get that started tomorrow. We have the money. We don't need to dedicate a full year of our time to get that going. We could do that tomorrow, we have money.
Yep.
So let's get that done. That doesn't require to be an actual goal other than something that we just keep up with and make sure that it moves. It has not moved. It's been two years since we've discussed that, and we can't do another two years of not moving on the Lower Lake area plan or updating our general plan, because those are documents that we need to accomplish so that we can move forward in the 21st century with any kind of new development or any kind of new anything. And so let's, let's make sure that we just take the easy hanging fruit that just require us to say, hey, we have some money right now that we haven't spent, let's put it to good use and make sure those things move forward. And, but I mean this, I really want to see action, and a planning document, that's our background, behind-the-scenes action, that's not action that people care about, that's bureaucratic, that's boring, that's dull.
That's what I said!
Necessary, absolutely necessary. But I really hope we can walk away from here saying, how are we changing people's lives? Not how are we, how are we changing our operation so we could do better? That's something we should always be doing, and it is a priority for us. But we should make sure that we are making action to change people's lives is really what I'm looking for today. And if we can break those down, now we only have, what is that, eight?
So I lumped all of the, based on what I think you said, I lumped all of, there are four that I just lumped together under community revitalization. I realize this is not approved yet, you're just discussing, but.
And I'll just say this, since nobody's spoken on it, let's put poverty intervention on the side.
Put it on the side?
Yeah, and also the local ownership program, nobody's spoken on that. So let's just put those to the side. Let's start erasing the ones that we have not discussed, and not erasing them, but putting them to the side as in, right now, they're just, they're in the penalty box.
And I think the reason why I didn't mention poverty intervention is because Hope Rising is super focused on that, and that's work that they're already doing. Or that would have been my goals.
Well, it's not gone yet, but it's just, it's put on the sideline. I feel like I need to look at my goals, what's realistic within the context of this discussion, what needs to be pulled out and what needs to remain in. That way, we can again, keep narrowing it down and narrowing it down so that we can end up with a decision of what we are intending to do coming out of this workshop.
So it appears that the Economic Development Task Force is going to be talking about housing, but I think it's important for us to agree that that's a priority. It can be a little vague as far as the goal today, but if we set it as a priority, then what the Economic Development Task Force brings, then it's going to be easy for us to adopt as a goal. And the disaster preparedness prevention and recovery, that's a way of life for us. So it's, you know, the language has to be adopted in my mind, so that everything that we do moving forward, we're thinking, we already are thinking about it, we already are doing the work, and this just validates that work and makes it a priority that all of us can see. So that work is happening, that's not going to take a lot from the staff because we have other organizations working on that and agencies, but I think it's important for us to commit to that.
And you wanted to update Vision 2028 to add it to there?
Yes.
And that way, it is a priority goal overall of what we intend to get to, and I would suggest, let's put that on an agenda, let's revise and see if this conversation requires additions, deletions, changes to Vision 2028, because it's a moving, it's a moving target. 2018 did not have a pandemic, all of a sudden, we have that, is there something we want to change because of that, things like that. And so if we, if we can help you with that task and help continue support RRA and other organizations such as that, then that would not necessarily make it a priority coming out of this goal, but it would become a priority based on Vision 2028 as a whole.
So is this not the time to add that language?
I'd say let's add it, but at this moment in time, it's very vague conversation versus the specific, here's the language exactly that needs to be.
I had the language on my slide.
I don't think today we're voting on approving language to be added to Vision 2028, which is why I was saying, let's bring it back as an agenda specifically for that.
Okay.
And I almost would have to say that the tax sales, prioritizing those would also fall under the community, the community one.
I don't disagree.
Because we need to clean up our communities, and we can't do that if we have property owners that are not taking care of their properties.
It's definitely a part of the conversation when discussing, what are we going to do with this property? What's the problem with this property? How could we solve the problem of this property? Looking that over and figuring out is definitely a part of that. So I agree.
I think that's good. It's good. I also just like to highlight that what I mentioned in the beginning was, and I was really generous because I gave the number of $25,000 per property, which I know that's not realistic, because some of them could be more or less, but times that, times the 10,000 properties, and you've got $250 million. We can do a lot with that. I'm looking at money that we could use to do everything you guys are talking about and not have to go back and forth about it. That's where I, that's what I want to invest our time and money into, is something that's going to allow us to do everything we're talking about and hire more people and helping hands to do it, so. But again, it is something that can be done on the side. It's not something that needs to be one of these. So I'm just highlighting that.
Well, I mean, we just mentioned, we could just mention, these are our ongoing priorities, these are our new priorities.
I could appreciate that.
I am wondering if this would be a good opportunity for discussion because you guys have done a tremendous job of winnowing this down. Would it be a fair time to talk about what workforce investment might look like continuing on the work that's been done?
And I don't know, I mean, I'm up for the conversation, but I'm also nervous about the conversation, just because it's, it's something that eventually is under negotiations, and so to speak of what exactly we want to see, but I would suggest, I guess, that our goal is to reduce the 20% vacancy, and there's specific reasons why we have 20% vacancy. But as to the exact steps that we take to invest in our workforce, I think it makes me nervous to speak on specifics.
Yeah, you know, go ahead, Carol.
Could I, Mr. Chair? Certainly, the department heads will be joining us, in fact, many of them are here, but they'll be joining the discussion here before too long. And I just wanted to offer a comment about workforce investment, not talking about how much or what to offer employees, but just how critical the need is. We have a long history of thinking that we don't have capacity to do things because we haven't. And so as you recall, the last couple of workshops that you've had like this, the conversation has always reverted back to, I need more staff, you know, I need better pay in order to attract more staff, et cetera. And so an initial step was made with the salary study, no doubt, I mean, a bold step that I know has been appreciated by employees, but I think work is really But I think work is really critical in this area of workforce investment in order to get your workforce to believe that they can accomplish the goals you want. Because at this point, I'm not sure there is a strong belief system that we can move forward and do all these things, because we have this long pattern of not having the capacity to do it. And so absent talking about the money at all, it's really about, you know, it's like this core issue that holds us back, because, you know, we just have had this thinking for so long that, you know, that we don't have enough.
You know, it didn't come with specifics, obviously, you talked about that. But just for me, when we talk about priorities, you know, we kind of hit it. You know, I put it in there from the, we can't because of our limitations to we can. And, you know, just continuing on that path this year, just need to make sure, you know, we're all in this together. These are not easy decisions we're making moving forward, but we have to keep them as a priority. Because everything else that's coming around, the disasters, everything else, we can't get distracted on, you know, the long-term goals. And I believe that workforce is. So specific conversations, we'll have that. You ask for a priority, that is a priority. It'll be a priority, as I said, on this board until, well, every time, you know, because no matter what, things are going to change. You know, it costs more to live every year, living, cost of living increases. There's everything that's happening, it's going around us. So, you know, I don't have specific, but like I talked about, 20%, you know, vacancy rate, you know, and recruitment retention, then we get folks in, you've got the training issues. You know, everything needs to just tie together. So for the long-term strategy, I just believe every year, it should be a priority for us to have these conversations. And I know it's a long tedious process. And I'm not saying we're ever going to make everybody happy, but we just need to continue those conversations, keep working towards it. So that's really specifics we can bring, because you're right, there's a whole bunch of dynamics going to with the, you know, with the labor unions and everything. So, but I need to just say, it is a priority for me. And I know it is for the board too, but when you ask to bring priorities, this is, you know, these are the two that I go, I just go off the history as we all had professors before we came on here and look at it. I've been lucky enough to, and you know, you've just been a part of this too, and a lot of their development with some of the tribal nations. And you've got to sell yourself, you know, bringing $100 million or more into this community. It's not easy, but it can be done. I know, because I've signed those deals, I've brought that. It's a scenic drive over St. Helena. It's not a scary, windy drive. It's a scenic drive to the most beautiful place in Northern California with a beautiful lake. And you've got to sell that, you know. And, you know, it's all stuff that needs to be done, but we can't do it without that solid workforce and just the reliability. And, you know, when we talk about, you know, how are we improving the lives of our constituents is, well, when there is a disaster and something happens, we have that workforce up, whether it's community development, high environmental health, code of law, whatever. When they're rebuilding their home, when it's not a painful process to get that done, that's helping their lives. That's helping them reinvest in the community. That's helping them understand that, you know, we're here to help, you know, not make things tougher in a tough situation. So that's where all my thoughts come from and just experiences here on the board. And I know our current workforce that we have does everything they can. How many conversations we've all been in, when we know they're stretched thin, we come up with the idea and they're like, oh yeah, we can get it done. And you just, you feel, you feel bad for even asking, because you know they're doing everything they can and they're giving everything they got. So, you know, that's my, that's my pitch all day. You guys aren't going to give me a change or get distracted on it, so.
So I just want to build on the workforce conversation and continue this as a priority. And we need to look at our IHHS workers. They are, we control their salaries. And we have an aging population in our county. We have a lot of disabled, we have seniors, we have isolated people, who, these are the only people that they come in contact with. And we can use this workforce, we can train them for disaster preparedness. We can help get information to these isolated people, help them with evacuations. Like we, this is why I wanted to make disaster preparedness prevention part of our strategy, because then it comes down into all of our other departments. And these workers, they are an important workforce that we really need to look at. And there's like 2,000 of them?
Approximately.
So they will contribute to our economy too, if they're paid better. So I'd like to extend that conversation to that group as well.
I'd like to make a few observations. Supervisor, would you then be good with us moving that into underneath workforce investment?
I would, yes.
And I'm wondering if you all are feeling, here's a thought I have. If you're feeling prepared to put forward your two and then open it up to the department head conversation, and then at the conclusion of that, to see if you're still feeling set on the two.
I would almost like to hear from the public and the department heads before we decide on our two.
What I was hoping to do was to at least share a decision, but it's not the final decision. That way, we can at least have the public have a conversation based on where we think we're heading, rather than leaving it wide open and then we make a decision. I think it's easier to share our thoughts prior to the public conversation, or else we should open back the public conversation once we've opened up entirely of where we think we're going. I would like to offer a suggestion. Where it comes to update Vision 2028, and I don't see it on there, but we talked about updating like general plan. And so maybe saying like updating documents or certain, something along those lines, because I don't see that there. And we've discussed it quite often about general plan and area plan. But if it can go with the, yep, no, that works right there. I think that I would like to offer this. Workforce investment, continue supporting priority, because that has been a priority. Obviously, we took action less than a year ago, because that was a priority. And we've stated publicly that we are looking to see what is possible to continue moving that dial, rather than saying, oh, we're done, we're good, let's walk away. And so that definitely has been stated publicly. That is something that we are still looking at, to see what is possible to keep moving. So continue supporting that priority. With the community revitalization, I think, I don't know if it's called community revitalization, but basically, community cleanup plan or something like that, I would like to see that going to either code enforcement or creating an ad hoc committee so that we can kind of finalize, what does a good community cleanup plan look like? And bringing that back to the board. And I would say realistically, giving about a 60-day timeframe to be able to come up with that plan and bring it back and see what the cost would be and what the outcomes are planned for, so that we can really hash this out in more detail. As far as the economic development portion and all those things underneath, continue to support and prioritize the EDTF projects, their priorities. But I would even go further and say even for the update general and area plans, that by, let's give it a timeline for when we start with our contracting to get those things started. Rather than just saying we want to do it, let's give a timeline so that we try to get this done or started prior to it moving much further. Again, we spoke about Lower Lake area plan, and I believe it was 2019, where we continued on and said, yes, this is the oldest, let's start with it. We really need to get that one started so we can move on to the others that are just behind it one year later, as far as age-wise. And so let's go ahead and set a timeline. And I would say by the end of the year, by the end of December, by the end of September. I don't know what that timeline needs to look like, but I'm guessing we would put out an RFP and then we'd go through the bids. But just to be realistic, I'm saying December. That way, we're not just saying we want to do these things, but we're also stating deadlines to make sure that those things get done. Yes.
Well, if we're committing resources to this, we don't have to do just one at a time.
And I think that's.
And we should explore possibilities of have them, you know, have multiple plans in the works at the same time. If we do one at a time, we're going to be here having this same conversation of 15 years. Like, we need to get them all done. So let's look at a strategy where we can do that.
But what I remember from the last conversation, when we talked about that, it's community development, even though if we do hire an outside entity, still has to be incredibly involved in those plans. And they said it'd be easier for them to work on one at a time.
And we could get their feedback from that. But there are other things that can be done in the communities. There's a community board that's selected, and they meet and they set their priorities. So that kind of work may not be done by community development as much. So we, they're the experts, let's listen to them. But if we can work on more than one at a time, I think we should try and do that.
Would this be, Chairperson Sabatier, I wasn't exactly clear on your, how you wanted to move forward with public input and the department heads. Would this be a time to move into that discussion with the department heads?
And I kind of gave out some ideas on continued support for this, continued support for that, putting an ad hoc committee developed plan for that. I would love to get the feedback from the board, because this is not my plan. This is our plan. And I just want to make sure that, I was just putting out a suggestion, an idea, to be able to kind of get it a little bit more clear as to why these things are written in and what's expected of those things. So just looking for feedback. That way, again, the public is more understanding and aware of what it is that we're looking at.
Well, I think with the economic development work, you're just reaffirming what the priorities are for that group. Unless they're working on other things, and these would fall, these would rise to the top. I'm not sure what's going on with that group. But this is a reaffirmation of that, a reaffirmation of the workforce investment. And then the other two would be our priorities.
That sounds approximately, yes.
Kind of looks like it.
Just go back to my statement all day. You can have all the priorities in the world you want, if you've got the workforce to get it done. And we're going to hear from the department heads and other things. You know, hopefully, we'll get their perspective for our community. But, yeah, you know, everything up, you know, all 12 on their support all the way through the projects. Today, when we were talking about coming for priorities that were achievable this year, you know, I just know that the workforce investment stuff is something truly believe we could get done this year that will help us move forward. When we talk about the general plan and the area plan updates, you know, if we start with the area plans, we've got to do the general plan, because it's all got to tie together. You know, so I don't think Lake County has ever done where you're doing the general plan and you're doing the area plans all together in one. The general plan is heavy enough lifting as it is. But a good thing is, there are some of the, you know, area plans and stuff that aren't too old. And we're looking about a decade now. And that's not old in government, you know, because we've all dealt with issues that have been hanging around since 1950 or whatever. So just looking at that. So, you know, I think everything up there, however it goes, you guys, you guys know me, ask me my priorities, I've given those. But moving the county forward is always the ultimate goal. So whatever ends up on there, we'll just continue supporting and we'll go from there. So appreciate today, you know, it's a good day coming up with these ideas. We all know where we stand now, and our votes say that when it comes to us as a board. So I'm good with going with these four right now, kind of the way we got it. Let's get some more discussion going.
And as far as I see it, if any goal was brought and is not listed on the things that we are going to prioritize from this workshop, it doesn't mean that it's dropped and it falls off the face of the earth. It could still be followed up on an individual basis, brought back to the board on an individual basis. That doesn't mean that it doesn't get done. It just means that we are not coming out of this with the idea that we're going to invest in these goals and make sure that these goals move forward. And I do want to say also that in the conversation, the idea is solutions, not what's holding us back, because there's so many out of the box ideas of things that we can do to solve some of our issues, whether it's the issues of funding, whether it's the issues of capacity, whether it's the issues of staffing, whatever that issue might be. There's solutions to those issues that doesn't have to prohibit us from getting the things done that need to get done, to lay out the foundation to get a whole lot more done once those things are done. So if everyone is ready, oh, Supervisor Crandall.
No, I think that, you know, we've been, we're at 11:15. But I just wanted to say that, you know, I actually forgot.
Sorry, I didn't get to you in time.
You need a snack.
Yeah, no, it's just, I thought about a lot of these problems that we deal with and that I get calls about in my district and whatnot. And that's why I tried to look at something that can take care of the overall problem at a higher spectrum and stop putting Band-Aids on things and whatnot. And I do agree with the plans, because I remember when it came, a lot of my constituents were the ones talking about it. So, you know, things that can, that can change the overall, you know, that can cover many, touch many different subjects, I think is great too. And so I, there's a lot of moving parts, that's where I was at. There's a lot of moving parts to some of mine. I still need, the departments still have to, you know, say, like, a tax collector come and say, hey, I don't think that's going to work. You know, that's nice, EJ, nice dream, or something, you know, I don't know. Same with, same with anything else, you know. So there's that. And then there's some people in the public that are, you know, that may have some insight as well. Actually, that's where my ideas came from. I have people in the public that have a lot of experience that helped me and worked with me on some of this stuff, so.
And I do want to say, I do appreciate all the goals being very county-wide, not very specific to any area. I know that Supervisor Scott did show pictures of Scott's Valley, but she mentioned the same issues being in District 3 and District 1 and so on. And I really appreciate that we are looking at Lake County and what needs to happen for Lake County to move forward, not specific areas. And I think that's where we become stronger in the decisions that we make is when we look at the entirety and the big picture. It sounds to me, Michelle, if we are done with our discussion, I think this is your hard break you were talking about.
I'm thinking if people might need a break and Supervisor Crandall might need a Snickers bar. I know that feeling. But I'd also like us to make sure you have adequate time for the department heads.
And what kind of timing, I don't know what kind of timing we'll need, depending on what kind of amount of comments that we receive. But what would you suggest? We come back at 11:30 and then start right away with our department heads?
I would think that having a good, solid hour, so that you have time for wrap-up from 12:30 to when your workshop is over at 1:00.
Okay.
And public comment also.
Of course.
And you're getting some good public comment in the chat.
Yep.
And one person had to leave and emailed me her public comment. I'll read it when we get there.
Thank you.
And I want people to keep in mind that one of the recommendations is that using the Economic Development Task Force as a model, that the board would follow this up with the roadmap task force. So it's not just going to sit in a vacuum. So just wanted to make that clear.
Right.
All right, 11:30, hard start.
Thank you. All right, looks like we're back. I'm looking for our host, Michelle Scully. All right, and Michelle, are we ready to go ahead and just open it up for department heads to discuss with us what we've been discussing?
I think that would be awesome.
Okay. And we are not forgetting that we do have public members here with us. We will open that up as well. But first, let's go ahead and hear from department heads. On the, if we can put it up on the Zoom screen, what our proposed priorities are, so that makes it easier for the discussion.
And we want to be cognizant of our time constraints, but also knowing that this is not a one-off conversation.
Correct. This is, as we were just discussing during the break, this is more of a direction of where to go and what next steps will be taken. There's no official action being taken here. And what you see is very much a brief summary of ideas, not a complex, fully thought-out, fledged-out plan.
And that, one of the goals of this workshop is to come out with an actionable entity, AKA roadmap task force.
Correct. So I am trying to figure out, there it is. Okay, so I have my participant list up here. And if you are a department head and you have questions, comments, anything to. And if you are a department head and you have questions, comments, anything to say on the conversation that we've had thus far, please raise your hand and help join our discussion. I see that we have Susan Cronus with her hand up, if we can unmute her, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, I just have a couple of things that popped into my head as I heard, listened to the discussion. Obviously, this, our office is understaffed as most other offices, departments are. But, you know, in terms of environmental actions, the DA's office might be able to assist code enforcement as well as, you know, we do have tools in regards to criminal penalties for environmental crimes and also administrative fees and fines that we can charge people with on the civil side. But we have the authority to do that, the DA has the authority to do that. In terms of housing, you know, red tag houses, people staying in those facilities, you know, those homes is a big problem. And I could look into ways that we might be able to assist that. And we have lost our CDAA, California District Attorney's Association, environmental prosecutor. But, you know, I'm still willing to have us handle these as much as we can. In terms of cleanup and, so I think that the goal of cleanup, community cleanup and planning environmental issues, I'm hoping that I can assist in that. Also, the marijuana issue in terms of revenue for that, you know, there is a civil way that the DA's office can find individuals who have permits that are, you know, not paying what they should in terms of they have too many plants and there's fines that could be levied on them. So anyway, that's just some ideas that I came up with.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go with Stephen Hagic, had his hand up next. Stephen, if you can unmute.
It's a phone, he may need to be told how to do it on a phone.
Do we know what his phone number might be? Because I do know that he does do both the phone and, is he 263-2234? I think that's correct.
I want to say in the past that he's called in from a phone that edited in 0217, I want to say.
And so that is an attendee right now, if we bring, or was an attendee, not now.
Stephen, I've sent you an unmute request, it should be a prompt on your screen.
Maybe you could take the next one while Jake.
Yep, if you guys can work with Mr. Hagic and try to get him the ability to speak with us, that would be great. But let's go ahead and move on to Christopher Veach.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
So I'm Christopher Veach, county librarian, and I just want to thank you for this opportunity to hear your priorities and ideas and participate in this conversation. It's really enlightening to see where we want to move with our community. Regarding the community cleanup, I wanted to add in perhaps considering capital improvements of our own county facilities. At the library, our main library is approaching 40 years old and our largest library is approaching 20 years old. And these facilities have served our communities admirably and we've done things to try to maintain them. But it may be time to update them to serve the community as it is now and for the future. And I'm sure that's the same for other county departments. And then I just wanted to add in that there are many ways a library can augment and be an educational partner on some of these issues. In the past, through book to action style programs, we've had community members learn about an issue and then take that new knowledge and apply it with a community action. And of course, we also provide a community meeting space for discussion and provide resources to help inform residents and provide the information they need to participate fully in some of these self-governing decisions. And then a little bit about the workforce investment, minimum wage is increasing again. And at the library, I will once again have library staff where the first few steps in the salary will be below minimum wage. So I really appreciate the work that we've done so far on this issue, but there is more work to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and move on to Scott DeLeon.
Good morning. First, I'd like to just thank the board for all of your efforts and the time spent to develop these, your individual goals and for the opportunity this morning. I don't think there's anyone on this meeting that would argue with the merits of all of the things we've discussed today. You know, we've talked about staffing and resources and funding and, you know, I think that that is going to be the trick is finding a balance between where we are currently, where we want to be. And I'm anxious to work with administrative staff and your board to put more resources in play here on the third floor because a lot of the things that you're talking about and a lot of your goals involve various departments and divisions that I manage. And I think it's just going to need to be a balance to find the resources and find the balance of the staff and what we can afford and where we can take this. Really excited about your code enforcement stuff and the cleanup plans. I think for the first time in a long time, we are fully staffed in code enforcement and we're already doing some great things already this spring. You know, just a couple of details, we've already abated over 100,000 cannabis plants, illegal cannabis plants so far this year. Over 18 properties that all have various code violations. So we have been very, very busy and we will continue to be busy throughout the summer. And again, just look forward to working with admin and your board to try to accomplish as many of the goals that you've laid out today. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I alluded to earlier, that there's already a North Shore cleanup plan. I would believe and predict that the conversation about the community cleanup plan would probably start with what is already happening rather than reinventing the wheel from scratch.
And I appreciate you reminding me of that and reminding everybody of that. You're absolutely right and we've already been working with that task force. And it reminded me of one other thing, we are trying to finish up some modifications to the ordinance to put into place additional administrative citation abilities and the ability to use fines and pursue fines for different code violations. And we're working with county council on that and plan to be bringing that to your board just as quickly as we can get that in front of you and to help with some funding for code enforcement to continue supporting those goals.
Thank you for all that information. Any other department head raised their hand? And we have Director Metcalf.
Yes, thank you, Board of Supervisors. This is Todd Metcalf, Director of Lake County Behavioral Services. I just wanted to thank you all for pulling all these issues together. I know this is not an easy task. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of the things that you were talking about, you know, around workforce investment. You know, salaries are a big deal, but it's not just about salaries. It's also about developing, you know, career pathways, developing robust training curricula, maybe offering flexible work hours. Of course, the pandemic has allowed us to have staff work remotely. And just any other allowable perks to offer our workforce, I would say should be considered. And also around the housing piece, please keep our housing continuing care in mind around these discussions because there may be a way to maximize and braid any of the funding that comes through the housing continuing care that could be used to address some of these housing issues. So I just wanted to mention that as well. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and go to Lars Ewing and then we'll go back to Steve Hagic.
Good morning, thank you, Board. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. And I think the comment that I have here, along with the appreciation for some fine tuned goals here, is a recognition that a lot of the work that is being done, specifically a community cleanup plan, a lot of what Scott DeLeon and Supervisor Sabatier referenced with an existing plan already in place, work already being done at a variety of different task force levels, whether it's Solid Waste Task Force or others. So I think it's good to kind of get this, I guess I'll say synthesized with some action plans. Christopher Veach mentioned capital improvement plan and I think that's a very good point. Community cleanup plan, we tend to think the communities, or at least when you first read it, you think that. So you think, you know, residential and commercial. But I think if we lead from the front with our facilities, getting them cleaned up, so to speak, refreshed, I think that's an excellent point and I appreciate him bringing that up. So that's all I have to comment on.
And I'll ask that question separately. I know that you've been working on a capital improvement plan process. And so hopefully we can hear where you are about that soon.
Sure, well, I'm happy to update it now, just briefly. We're actually using the libraries as a pilot project to flush out some of the, kind of tweak it, identify how a department head like Christopher would be responding, how I at the facility level would be addressing the needs that maybe the department heads aren't aware of. You know, rooftops, HVAC equipment, things like that. So we're using that as a pilot project. In fact, we kick off the facility assessment for those on Monday. So a lot of work being done behind the scenes.
Awesome, great news. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jake, if you could please help and make sure we can get Steve Hagic on here.
It looks like he is unmuted right now, are you trying to speak with us?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just want to say that I fully support code enforcement and I appreciate them being fully staffed and fully funded at the whole nine yards because they're a big help to us when we deal with issues with cannabis and ham, so.
Thank you very much. Any other department head wish to make a comment or ask some questions? And we have Doug Gerhart.
Hello, I just wanted to say just a couple of quick things and thank you for this. And I think actually the list is a very good list for projects and priorities moving forward. And I was just going to mention, one issue that's mentioned is the housing issue, but it's also a problem with workforce development. We've had a number of applicants that have not taken positions with us because they couldn't find adequate housing. So just finding housing locally is a challenge even for, not even for locals, but trying to find, bring in employees. So I think that that is a definite priority and getting adequate housing built in the county should be, is definitely an important issue to bring people in and bring new employees and new ideas into the county.
Thank you very much. Then we have Carmen Cuck.
Hi, I am Carmen and a department head for the University of California Corporate Extension. I just want to say thank you to the board for the opportunity to be part of this discussion this morning. It was definitely really interesting and very enlightening to be a part of it. I am really looking forward to seeing the detailed plan for these priority areas and have our Corporate Extension Office support that, either with the work that we do on the fire safety, as part of the community cleanup and disaster prevention or the work in the agriculture industries that will promote economic development and/or through the work we do with youth, slightly differentiated, but investing in them as future workforce members in workforce investment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is Anita Grant.
Ms. Grant, go for it.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention in conjunction to what Susan Cronus mentioned, that with regard to certain environmental actions that give rise to unfair business practices, this office can, if the district attorney allows, this office can also move those civil cases forward and we have experience doing so. For our office, all we would need is the periodic services of an investigator. So you would also have that option in the county with regard to code enforcement activities.
Thank you very much. Any further department heads wish to speak? And I see we have Barbara Ringen.
Okay, I believe Barbara has called in from a phone as well.
Oh, we heard her.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Barbara Ringen, Treasure Task Cluster. I would like to talk about the area of the tax defaulted property sales. And I know it was mentioned a little earlier to possibly hold monthly sales versus the annual sales. And that would be very difficult, if not impossible, to do. We do go by the state timeline that's published by the State Controller's Office. Their recommendation for preparing the files for the sale and selecting the parcels, 210 days, 225 days prior to the sale. So there's a lot of detail and tasks and statutory deadlines that have to be accomplished prior to the auction starting. So I know it does sound like it might be easier to have monthly sales, but it actually would be easier or less complicated and more streamlined to continue with the process of either annual tax sales or possibly two sales in a tax year. But for the size of parcels that we're trying to offer for sale, anywhere from this year, I think total between the two sales, we've offered about 600 parcels. And then next tax year, our goal is to offer more than that, between maybe nine and 900 and hopefully maybe up to 1,000 parcels. It would be much more efficient to go by the state timeline as far as preparing the files and following all the statutory requirements that we are supposed to prior to the auction.
Thank you very much, Barbara. I believe Supervisor Crandall.
And that's why I mentioned earlier, like I still haven't got input from her. So now that she gave in that my goal seems a little less.
And I think that all of us brought basic concepts of ideas. I think we all knew that eventually before it becomes an actionable item, that it would get discussed and hashed out in order to really have something that was measurable, realistic, and something that we would be successful in doing so. But I do appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else from our department heads who wish to speak? And we have Rich Ford. Looks like you're unmuted. Not hearing you.
So he might have called in through a phone as well. Or you have a mute on your microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Must be, when you go to Microsoft meetings, for some reason it changes your mic a lot of times. So only thing I wanted to say was give you a little bit of background. As you guys increase the volume in tax sales, and that's that's great, I appreciate that. But I, my department, the Assessors Department, we do have a component of that, which is actually checking the legals. So we are trying to speed up getting the data of the legals in the system, but is not currently completely in the system. We have about 65,000 parcels, and we are working on improving the data on that. So we might, as we go down that road, might be able to meet, but at some point, we might actually have some resources that we'll need for that. So just keep in mind that it's, when they're at the tax sale, sometimes it's not just Treasure Task Cluster. That's all I wanted to make sure you guys understood.
Thank you very much for those comments. Any other department head wish to speak? Please raise your hand. Okay, it looks like we don't have any further comments from our department heads. And we've had some public members patiently waiting and listening to our conversation. Let's go ahead, and if you could raise your hand, if you are on Zoom with us through a computer or a smartphone, then please hit the button to raise your hand to speak. Or if you are here via telephone, please dial star nine to raise your hand. Okay, let's go ahead and let Carla Ritz provide a comment.
Yes, this is Carla Ritz. I'm the Executive Director for First Five of Lake County. Thank you so much for letting us eavesdrop on your conversation and your presentations and to be able to chime in. I just want to, first of all, thank Supervisor Sabatier for including in your goals a preschool goal, and it broke my heart a little when it dropped off the list. As you know, First Five, our goal is that one day, the success of our county will be measured by the well-being of our youngest children. And the reason for that is that the first five years are when 90% of brain development happens. And we know that investments in the first five years are proven to return 13% on that investment every year. And so we know it's a good investment. We know it's a creative investment. We know it's a forward-thinking investment. And so I just want to thank you, first of all, for bringing that as a valid opportunity for the county to engage in. I would hope it would come back sometime in the future. I appreciate Supervisor Scott, your comments that you would also support that, but you felt like the work that Hope Rising is doing might take care of that effort. And I would just, I would just say that there is a lot of really creative work being done by nonprofits in our community, and I'd really like to see the county get in on it, rather than focus efforts elsewhere, that you would support what is already going on and help sustain it. Parent education programs that are focused on families with young children have been shown to strengthen early parent-child attachment, promote healthy nutrition, increase school readiness in young children. There's just so much evidence around that early education component and strengthening families, and our county desperately needs that, and it's what's going to pay off in the long run. It's not something you can see. You can't see, you know, the cleanup of a young mind until much, much later. But it is absolutely economic development. It's absolutely community revitalization to invest in our youngest children. So we encourage you to keep them in mind in all of this and and work with us, those of us who are already involved in that work, to help support and sustain what's already happening. I know that Lake Family Resource Center has been working for years to try to add a Head Start program in Clear Lake, which is the best possible place for a Head Start, and yet they can't get a grant. Year after year, they're declined. And I would love to see matching funds coming in from the county to prioritize that crucial investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Betsy Khan.
Let's see. Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so much for all of this work. There are many, many existing sources of economic programs that I have not seen pursued here over the last 23 years that I've been here. Even though they entail more complicated processes, like working with the US EPA or working with the state agencies, I believe that we have missed several very important opportunities. One of them is to improve the environment, that everybody knows this needs so much healing, but we just continue to ignore opportunities to to do the environmental work. I don't know whether it's because of the classic resentment of the EPA or people not liking to work with the federal government, whatever it is, but there are just many, many opportunities for that at the state and federal level that we have, we have not used for the benefit of the environment, that for agencies that have been concerned about this for decades. So I'd like to suggest that you look at some of these environmental opportunities, and then also at the at the benefit of investing, as as the previous speaker said, Carla was talking about, investing in the local nonprofit organizations. You have a huge, huge base of people who are working for nothing and contributing lots and lots of work that is traditionally what this county relies on to fill those gaps, but that volunteer support system has sort of frittered away. I don't know why that is, but I think it would be really helpful if you would look at investing in your volunteer workforce as well as your paid workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else wishes to make a comment, again, please raise your hand. At the bottom of your screen, you will see a button or star nine if you are on a phone. If you don't see the button, as was stated earlier, go ahead and give us a quick chat. And while we wait for the next hand, I'm going to ask CAO Hutchinson to please read the email that you received.
Yes.
And I believe it was from Joanne Cicado?
It is. Okay. So yes, this is Joanne Cicado's comment. She was an attendee earlier but had to leave. So here's, she says, here's my comments. There are so many important and interrelated goals presented. I can understand the difficulty in narrowing it down to just a few. NorCal for Health, which is her employer, supports the board's commitment to promote the well-being and economic resilience of every Lake County resident. Since poor diet, tobacco use, lack of exercise, and alcohol consumption underlie the top 10 leading causes of death in Lake County, adopting healthy lifestyles that avoid such behaviors can prevent or reduce the devastating effects of chronic diseases such as heart disease, cancer, stroke, and diabetes. Local governments and their community partners are in a unique position to improve the public's health because of their capacity to establish public policies in their foundational guiding and planning documents and educate the community. For instance, communities are working to reduce secondhand smoke exposure to residents in multi-unit housing developments through their housing elements, encouraging and supporting local districts jurisdictions to redistrict, or excuse me, restrict the number of tobacco retailers near schools and other youth-populated areas, pharmacies in areas with high density of tobacco retailers, and restrict marketing, advertising, displays of tobacco and alcohol near schools and other youth-populated areas so we can focus on preventing health outcomes before they arise. We see health as an integral part to community wealth, that it creates healthy students that turn into healthy workers, that keep the cost of doing business down, as well as attract businesses looking for a healthy workforce. Creating conditions at the planning and policy level that support a healthy lifestyle will also attract and retain workers for our local businesses and organizations. So creating what are known as high-opportunity neighborhoods that increase access, excuse me, increase access to green space and healthy outdoor activities, increase access to healthy food, and decrease access and exposure to tobacco products and more, will go a long way to help creating the conditions for a healthy workforce and attracting businesses wanting to invest, contributing to that cycle of health and wealth, as has been discussed. There is also the opportunity to address health disparities and social justice issues through similar upstream planning. We invite the board to adopt a health-in-all-policies attitude, an approach as they are looking at all of their goals, and to keep in their minds upstream solutions that prevent the downstream problems before they occur. For example, with blight, some communities use tax dollars from local industries to make dump fees free, or you could use those dollars to subsidize curbside pickup, making it more affordable for all and hopefully preventing the blight in the first place. You could also look upstream to manufacturers of the products that are creating the waste, to reduce packaging, et cetera. I applaud all the ideas at the table and see an interrelatedness that needs a 30,000-foot view that can be supported through addressing planning and vision documents and adopting a health-in-all-policies approach.
Thank you very much for reading that, and thank you, Joanne Cicado, for your comments. I do not see any further hands up, just doing a last call, anybody from the public. And I'll also go back to our department heads. If anybody still wishes to say something, make a comment on the discussion that we're having. Go ahead and please raise your hand. And I don't see anybody from the public, but I do see that we have our Deputy Director, Susan Parker.
Okay. Assistant County Administrator Susan Parker.
Thank you for the correction.
Good morning, Board. I just want to speak on the housing element because I was so invested in providing that and getting it forward. We, as a county, were unavailable to apply for several grants because that was a mandatory requirement in, for the state of California and HCD. And the thing is that, I hope you understand, is that that's not the only mandatory requirement. When we seek funding from federal and state agencies, we have to have a certain plan in place or a process provided or, you know, identified in order to move forward, to even apply or become eligible. And that's why I'm speaking to this because, you know, it may seem that plans are not, how do I say this, they're not very, you're not cutting the gold ribbon, but in order to even access the funding available for federal, county, and local, you need to have these plans in place. And that's just, I just want to reiterate, the housing element adoption was very critical for us moving forward with any of our CDBG funding applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know our facilitator has momentarily lost her internet connection. She'll be back as soon as she can.
Well, that makes it a little difficult to facilitate. Thank you for letting us know. Any further comments? Again, still open for the public or department heads to raise your hand before we go ahead and bring it back to us. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so let's go ahead and close public comment and bring it back for final discussion. Just kind of wanted to test the pulse of the board with the priorities listed on the board still. Is that still acceptable for everyone, or do we need to rehash the discussion a little bit based on the comments that we've received? Keep moving forward.
And so I, you know, was was amending them as you were talking. And from my view, and I assume you're in the same mindset, these are not in a priority order. They're just there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. And some of them we've already been working on. Some of them will be new. What I had offered for Community Cleanup Plan is for setting a deadline of approximately 60 days to come back to the board to do a plan. What I'm going to do is work on next week, bringing together a, the creation of the Ad-Hoc Committee and who will be on the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'll work with our CAO to get that appropriately created.
We had proposed to call it the Roadmap Task Force. Did you want to call it something different?
No, let's go ahead and stick with that. I kind of paraphrased it as I was talking earlier today, but I knew roadmap was in there. And then we will come back with a update and revision of the, or in addition to Division 2028 for the fire preparation or to add that language. And
How about one month on that?
Could we see that up? You said you have that language, right?
I do. Would you like me to put that up?
Please.
Sure.
I think it's the second to last slide.
Your second to last slide?
I believe so.
Matthew sent me one.
Matthew had already put it together.
So let me do a new share.
Yeah, and I've
So the, there's Vision 2028, and in green was, what, did you and he meet on this just ago or is he recommending this? I'm not sure. Based on?
Well, this is based on a day of conversations back and forth. So, yeah, so the green line, I think that's, under Enhanced Public Safety, it would be develop and maintain a high standard of disaster preparedness, prevention, preparedness, and recovery.
Seems appropriate. But again, today's not an action day, so we'll, we'll have to bring that back, but that seems appropriate.
Mr. Chair, I'm seeing the word residence there, and we wanted to move away from, or no, wait, resident is the right word we want to use, right? Not citizen, because not every resident is, so.
Correct. No, it definitely looks correct to me. Could we go back to the previous?
Sure.
And then since we kind of hashed out a little bit of a conversation about general plan and area plans, what kind of timeline would you like to offer to get it back to us to discuss where we are, what's needed, or just to kind of re, not restart the conversation, but get an update on what's required and what we're doing, what the plan is?
Is that a topic that Economic Development Task Force is working on?
The, the area plan itself, no. We talked about updating some other general documents, such as the general plan. The area plan, we talked about two years ago, and at least I have not heard back of any updates since then. And it seems, based on our discussion today, that nothing has necessarily moved forward on that. I know that there's been a transition in CDD since that original conversation, and then there's been an extreme amount of, of applications submitted over to CDD. So it's just been on hold, I would believe, based on our conversation again. But just, are we looking for an update? Are we looking for what kind of?
Well, most of the areas have municipal advisory councils, not all of them, but a majority of them do. And we could go to the municipal advisory councils and ask if they're willing to participate and start this work.
And I know that that was already a part of our conversation about the municipal groups being part of the process. I don't know that that is the best approach to have them start the process versus being a part of the process. But again, that's just my recollection of the conversations we had. Supervisor Simon, you put your pen up.
Yeah, you know, my thought on was today, getting these priorities and going from there, you know, obviously, you know, the departments will need to be bringing. So I thought today we were just reaffirming this is a priority, the general plan update, you know, obviously, the other area plan updates. And we're setting those priorities today. We kind of kicked that in gear for community development or whoever's going to bring those proposals back to us as we move forward. So I thought that's what we were doing today. So I said it earlier, general plan update is so key to economic development that So I said it earlier, general plan update is so key to economic development that, you know, we need to get it started. You know, hopefully we'll see those here sooner than later. But also understanding, everything we're doing right now, right now is construction season. Right now is, you know, we got agriculture going on the ground. We got, if you're going to be doing large projects, whether it's culture or anybody else, it's work season right now. So we know there's a lot on the table. So my thought was getting the priorities, and we would see it when they have the ability to bring back those. Those are just my thoughts.
Okay.
I was definitely, that's the direction I was going, is set these priorities. And then, you know, the department heads know what direction we want to go and have them bring it back as soon as they possibly can, knowing that, you know, how incredible they are, while they're permitted.
Okay.
Well, and I would add that Susan Parker was instrumental in the housing element and getting that RFP out for the Lower Lake Plan. And so maybe she could be, be supportive with CDD, as we're so busy right now, with coming up with a strategy on how we get these plans updated.
Okay. Well, direction has definitely been given. I agree. But at the same time, I want to make sure that we don't give direction as was given before, and then that we come back two years later. And so I would say that we do at least a three-month check-in with the Roadmap Ad-Hoc Committee, just to kind of say, hey, these things are being worked on, or whether that comes back from the EDTF as well, who is doing quarterly reports. That way, we're up to speed on where things are and what is happening. It's not necessarily going to be the final product, but at least we will be kept up to date, rather than not being kept up to date.
So the Roadmap Committee isn't just for community cleanup plan, it's for the, the whole entire list.
If it falls under the EDTF, I don't see the reason for the Roadmap Committee to have to double up on those things. But on things that are new, that are based on this, yes. So no need to duplicate the work, take on the unique priorities and see if we can move separately and parallel.
And I thought, you know, is our facilitator back? No, but you made that point.
She is, but I want to see if she has audio. Michelle, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, I am glad you couldn't hear me, because I was having a conversation with broadband, so. I want you to put that on your list.
When we started out, Michelle, you were talking, you know, we're going to kind of use the, the task, you know, the Economic Development Task Force kind of roadmap that we already put together for how that's working. So we've already had two reports that have come to the board. So expected the same that this task force will be put together for this roadmap. It's going to be the same thing. And I really like that, because that holds our feet to the fire each time for the deliverables. And I think going forward, as we're doing these things, that's always a good way to do it. So, yeah, that's why I was saying, you know, I thought we were already established that we're no use reinventing the wheel. It's working for the Economic Development Task Force, so I think.
Correct. That way, things don't.
And we've all been involved in those reportings, you know, having to do that myself and EJ on the first quarter, you know, the first reports. And, you know, so expect it to see the same way.
That way, things don't fall off the map, and we're, we're very well aware of what's happening.
Who's facilitating the Roadmap Task Force?
And at this point, like I said, I'll work with the CAO to bring back, to share the, what does that committee look like? Who will be on that committee? Because it has not been created, nor is there a specific number of members or specific categories of who's going to be on the membership at this moment in time.
But I can tell you're interested in being on that board.
I'll catch that. Michelle, I'll, I'll bring it back to you.
Well, I don't know what I missed when I was flailing around with trying to get back on, but I, I appreciate what Supervisor Simon said about how the EDTF and the report out has worked. And I was, so the second report out is coming up, but I was really impressed with the interaction with the whole board and many things that have been brought up, you know, like Lars mentioned, things he's doing with capital improvements. I think it's a great opportunity in the report out for all the great work that's already being done to get rolled into that. So everybody's, like you said, Chairman Sabatier, not reinventing the wheel, but just building on that, that work and supporting it.
Yeah, I'd like to expand on that, Michelle. Thank you for saying what you said about the updates from the department heads and whatnot. I even say that in many different discussions we have, they don't get a chance to project out what they're doing. And a lot of times, you know, people are calling us and saying, what's being done? And I'll tell them. And they'll say, well, why don't we know about this? So this gives us a good opportunity, and I'm glad that some folks have spoke out on it. And unless it's covered in the newspaper or something like that, sometimes it's not even, it's not, it's not shared. And that's, so that, I think that's good that some folks were able to give some updates on that.
I feel like we've accomplished our goal that we set out. I appreciate the discussions that we've had today. It's very difficult to narrow things down and what needs to get done, because there's so much we want to get done. But I feel like we are at a good conclusion for today's meeting, if, unless everyone else, unless others feel differently.
I, I just want to add one thing, and that was Carla Ritz's comment in the preschool initiative that you have brought up. And I do feel that at some point, we, we should help the Head Start in Clear Lake and figure out a way to have a grant for that.
And I think those are, again, all other goals that were put to the side are not goals that will disappear. Those will be goals that get worked out in a different capacity. And then potentially brought back.
Just expand on that. I think I've heard everyone I've sat on this diocese with, you know, and obviously come from the education background, education or next generation, you know, and constantly supporting that. I know a lot of work on the boards, Tina does, you know, a lot more obviously with the connective there, but complete support of our education programs, and it is the next generation. They're going to be better than us. They're going to be smarter than us. We need to support them. And, yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. And so I believe this concludes our meeting for today, Michelle, unless there's something we're missing.
There, there, first of all, you all get points for concluding a meeting earlier. There's points for that. And I also wanted to say that one of the things I have found really rewarding about watching the work that the Economic Development Task Force is doing is the reporting out to the board. And there had been a comment about the public being able to participate in the discussions of the Roadmap Task Force. And in those report outs, that is the opportunity, isn't it, for the public to comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear, because there'd been a request about that.
So then you can put in a pitch for the fact that the Economic Development Task Force has its quarterly report coming up, and public input is welcomed.
Yes, very much so. Well, I, I hope everyone feels, so many, so many weighty things. And I think that as we drive along, that we're going to find a way that these things, I guess in biking, what's it called, drafting? That so many of these things draft behind each other. So the comment was that commenting is not the same as participation in the development, but.
Mr. Chair?
I heard a voice.
That's Anita.
It's Anita, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. Just for a point of clarification in talking about public comment, certainly when an item comes on before the board, the public is entitled to comment. But anybody created by the board that has to be Brown Act compliant also has to allow for public comment. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
So, well, well done, everyone, and thank you for letting me be a small part of this morning, day, afternoon with you. And I appreciate that you all are looking at reality as well as reimagining. That's a powerful thing, so kudos.
Thank you, everybody, for a wonderful discussion. This is step one, just like it was step one in the Economic Development Task Force. And this will continue and be brought back to the board.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.